Okay. We should be live streaming and recording and we are at 4:41, your worship, so take it away.
Welcome to the regular meeting of council, Tuesday, September the 7th, 2021, 4:41 PM. Meeting called to order, we'll have a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda?
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Rick Owen, be it resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on September 7th, 2021, beginning at 4:40 PM be approved as circulated to all members of council, with the addition of a verbal COVID-19 update as the new 6.1.
All in favor? Motion carried? Any declaration of pecuniary interest? Counselor Shaba?
Yes, your honor, I would like to declare pecuniary interest in item number 6.4. Do my engineering company, when I'm involved with it, you never know. And then item number 6.5. We did the demolition plan for the 37 Duncan way before my time in the council. Thank you.
Okay, duly noted, thank you. Petitions and delegations, we will start off with MPP John Vanthoff. An update on discussions with the Ontario North Line Rail Service. Welcome, John.
Thank you very much, your worship, and to council, thank you for inviting me to appear and for your indulgence. I was to appear before and I had to cancel. You contacted me quite a while ago on the ONTC issue. So I am fully aware of the concerns of the people of Kirkland Lake and as expressed by the council regarding ONTC's announcement of their planning process for the return of passenger rail. We are all happy about the announcement. Hopefully it comes to fruition. But one of the issues was that there was no stop in Kirkland. So I have put a request in to have a meeting with Karina Moore. That meeting hasn't occurred yet, where I want and hopefully we will have a full discussion of how they came to that position, how they planned to serve Kirkland Lake, and if Kirkland Lake could be served better if the passenger rail or why ONTC doesn't think that the passenger rail, if brought back, should stop at one of the major population centers in the north. I am fully going to back up the position that Kirkland Lake has to be served. I need to know how ONTC plans to do that before I really comment on what they are planning to do.
Just to update you, John, Counselor Shaba and myself and our economic development director, Will Haas, had a meeting, Zoom meeting with Karina.
Okay.
Had to be on our and tossed around some different ideas and she was looking for input. And we had some ideas that she thought made a lot of sense.
Okay.
I think I'll let Lad add to this, but I think it was a positive meeting. One of the things she's requested from council is to put together, not necessarily, it doesn't have to be a fancy package or anything, but just a questionnaire that is attached to this agenda today that would allow us to have some input, some ideas. We are still pushing for a public meeting because it's not just about council.
Yeah.
Council's effort. We need to show that the support is there. So Lad, if you would want to add to that?
Certainly, yeah. Good afternoon. The, yeah, the meeting did take place. I'm not too sure how much I can reveal. I, for your interest, John, I served on that commission for six years. And, you know, we struggle with just about everything that they're talking about now, most especially ridership. You know, that was the sole reason why that train was discontinued because of low ridership and then we are losing a lot of money. People are not riding the train. We've got that. So we had this meeting and part of me felt insulted. But I didn't want to say that because I know, but I know those people, they know me, they're still there anyways. And I will tell you why I felt insult, well, as a community member felt insulted, not personally. And the other part of me said, well, okay, at least we have, we have a place to hang our jacket going forward. Well, part of me that felt insulted, John, was the fact that we've been asked to provide a reason why the train should stop in Kirkland Lake. You know, in French, I guess it's called raison d'être, you know? Why do, people that have stops there now, did they put forward a reason why their stop should be there? So they were asking us to justify why our stop should be there. Well, and I was going to say, we had a stop before. You tell us why you took our stop away. Well, they turned around and said, well, you know, because of the low ridership. So for me, I can understand, I sat on that board, I can give them some of the information because I still have them. I don't know why the ridership in Matheson or Inglehart for that matter would be more than that of Kirkland Lake. But that's not why we were there. So they went through this ridership that maybe one of the reasons why it's not stopping in Kirkland Lake because of low ridership. And I don't believe that. I do not believe that. But anyways, that's just my beef about that presentation because I just thought that, well, you know, ONTC, well, we made a mistake. Let's work together to bring this thing back as opposed to telling us that we have to justify the reason for having that station to come back to Kirkland Lake. Anyways, looking forward, as the worship said, yes, we will be looking at means and ways to get that thing back to Kirkland Lake. And one of the things that they indicated was to maybe work with a business partner in our community. You know, maybe there would be a place where a business will undertake to have passengers go there and then buy their tickets and then somehow the passengers will essentially be transported to Swastika. Well, by the way, this is alarming because they thought that Swastika is a different municipality from Kirkland Lake. Right, your worship? They said, well, we have to get the permission from the municipality of Swastika. They said, well, no, we're all one. So they're trying to tell us ways to do it. I know we're not in the transportation business or municipality, we don't even have a transit. So I'm not too sure how we're going to do that to try to convince any business here to say, well, listen, you undertake this. And they may say, what is in for them? I don't know, maybe sell the tickets and people will have a waiting room there and then a taxi or a bus or something will come and get everybody to meet the train in Swastika. So that's one of the things that we bounce around, right, your worship? And, but I don't know how's that going to work, but we try to tell them that, I would try to tell them anyways with this thing here, that they don't have to have anything very fancy as a station. But we had a very picturesque display of what a new station would look like, something like MetroLink and all of that stuff. We said, we don't need those bells and whistles. We don't need all of that. We're using a nice C can, comfortable, and people can electronically get their ticket, wait till the thing comes, the train comes, get on and go there. I mean, if you want to put a machine there, vending machine for people to get a snack or something, so be it. It is not. Nothing very fancy. I mean, when you meet with them, they're going to show you that, the slide. This is, you know, talking about a very fancy station. That's what we're looking for. We're looking at service to our community because we have Northern College that have a lot of international students coming. All right? We don't want them to get off in Inglehart or get off in Matheson and then they have to drive them somehow, get them to Kirkland Lake. You already have a cost shock as it is coming to the north. And then we have a lot of seniors too, you know, what do they have to do? Go to Matheson or go to Inglehart? And then, I mean, we have a lot of businesses too. So I think, to me, it's an oversight on the part of Ontario North Line. I think we have to, we're going to work together with them. There's no need to be pointing fingers. I hope this is a reality. The train, of course, because I knew the budget. I, you know, I was on that board for six years. I knew that it was not viable then. Maybe it'd be viable now. Or we can turn it on and maybe, this is why you're, I'm glad that you're here, convince the government. Maybe they can understand the GO train, the GO train track, a little bit at the time, like they did Fall Leaning to North Bay. Because the problem that Ontario North Line is having is that they don't, the track from North Bay to Toronto does not, that's not theirs. It's a CN. CN will take freight over passenger. So I hope they work things out, but I think the government could convince, or at least, well, GO train is down in Barry. Maybe you do a little bit of a 20-year plan, like my carriage did, to a Fall Leaning from Barry to North Bay. Maybe we could start to get another line to come up. That way, the passenger track system would be separate from the freight system. But right now, even if it goes through, then the passenger line will be going through the rail system past North Bay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I would have to agree that there didn't appear to be a lot of behind-the-scenes legwork, John, in analyzing why we are not getting a stop here. Just as Lad said, so I think some of the ideas coming from council and from a public meeting and pressure from through your sources as well, John, would certainly help. But it's hard to accept the fact, and we're not knocking Inglehart or Matheson, good for them. But we're about three or four times the size of them and
Yeah, you're
get anything out of it. It just doesn't make sense.
No, and if I could, like you are, you are one of the major population centers in this area and you do have a college and so it makes sense. I'd just like to go back to Lad's issue on a separate passenger rail line. That would be the ideal and it's something that long-term we should look at. Short-term, we're going to do everything we can to try and get passenger rail back and to get passenger rail numbers or passenger numbers sufficient enough to keep the system going. Because if we bring back the same system, we're going to get the same result. And I don't think anyone wants that. We all want passenger rail back. We want a system that is going to serve Northerners. I don't think anybody is going to, we are not going to have a system that pays for itself. And public transit in Toronto doesn't pay for itself. To expect, to expect a northern passenger rail system to be self-sufficient is an unachievable goal and I'm hoping that the current government understands that. We certainly do. It is, but it is something that will bring economic activity back and will much better serve people if and when we get it back. As you know, and I'm going to be a bit political here. Both parties promised to bring it back in their first term. We aren't going to see that. I am a bit, I have full faith in ONTC. Not as much faith in the political will of the government to bring it back. So, but by working together, we definitely increase the chances. I think by Kirkland Lake advocating, we, you and I will as well, might, you might get a better, we might make the system better overall than if it had have been included from the top and we hadn't really paid attention, quite frankly. So I think it's good that you met with Karina and we will, I will as well. And, but the goal is to get the best service that we can, that people can rely on and people will use. Because quite frankly, the old, the old system, people didn't use it. And part of the reason was they always had to wait. There was, Lad's right, we always had to wait at, from North Bay down. So somehow, until we can permanently fix that, we will have to work on a schedule or ONTC will have to work on a schedule where we're not interfering as much with the freight lines.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I don't understand the problem with the tickets because they have an ONTC bus terminal in Kirkland Lake. Why can't the tickets simply be sold through that? That's another branch of the same corporation. Or Lad can correct me if I'm wrong. I know when my son was coming up from Toronto on the bus, he used to buy his tickets online. Now that technology is far out of the reach of someone like myself, but not my wife. You know, to me, that's a red herring. Like, why would, like, it's so obvious. Why wouldn't they see that? You go there, you buy your ticket, if you're like me and you don't do it online. And then you go to the train station, well, not station, but you go to Swastika and catch your train on the day the train is there. You know, all we really need is a windbreak to protect people from the weather. Also, when my mother was still alive, she used to take the train. So I'll give you an idea, we're talking a while ago. And the reason she took the train was she had arthritis, very, very bad. On the train, when her body started aching too much, she could get up and walk around. She could not take a bus. There's just no room and it would have been too painful. As a result, she had to go to limo services, which was much more expensive than the train at that time. But there are people with special needs in the north. I get a little frustrated when I hear about how much money the ONTC pays MetroLinks. I get a little frustrated having grown up in Southern Ontario to see GO Transit expand and expand and expand. I mean, I've been on GO buses that were next empty, you know? And yet, we've got our hand out asking for a basic service that is even more important here because we have less options to move from one place to another. And if you cannot afford to own a car or you cannot afford to own a car that you would trust to take on the road, which is the case for many people in Northern Ontario, then you're stuck. I mean, it's more than just money here. It's an essential service. And I think we've got to push for that. I don't know if that flies at Queen's Park. I don't know if that flies with the ONTC. But it hits my heartstrings to think that because we have a small population base and many of which can't afford to have their own transportation, they're stuck. That's not good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Owen. And I think the other thing you touched on, John, is a really important increased ridership. And we discussed that at the meeting and one of the things is as far as advertising when the train was running, they never spent much, ONR never spent much money on marketing. And in Southern Ontario, these GO trains and regular trains are used extensively. And we need to come up with a good game plan, but that's part of their marketing as well. They never really spent any money to develop passenger traffic. So hopefully, we got the message across and we'll come up with some good ideas that they'll have a tough time fighting that's against it. So anyway, I do appreciate on behalf of council, John, that you are going to bat for us. It's not going to be an easy battle, we know that. But, you know, the thing, the frustrating part was before they made their announcement of what they were going to provide for the north, they tore down the building in Swastika well in advance of that.
Yeah.
And something could have been done with that building. Yeah, it was, it's not the Holiday Inn, I agree, but it was built like a bomb shelter that they could have, could have done something with it. Because basically, as councillors are saying here, is more of a shelter that they're looking for. They're not looking like a beautiful station like North Bay has or some of the other areas. It's not going to cost a fortune to set up. They're going by the door, why not stop here?
Well, if I, if I could, I fully support your efforts and I would just, I would like to, I'd like to give a bit of a shout-out to ONTC and not, they make, they've made, I think they made a mistake here, but they are much more responsive, I find, now to market conditions than they were in the past. And I'll give you an example on the freight side. So before, I come from a farming area and we could never ship grain on freight cars because you needed at least 10 or 15 cars to get the ONTC excited. And now, when you talk to the ONTC, if you have 10 farmers who have one car apiece, that's also 10 cars. And so they have a different mentality, I find. And I think that mentality will serve us well with passenger rail as well. So I can't guarantee anything, but I have, I have more faith in the capabilities of the ONTC than I do in the political will of the government. So, but, but we're going to have to work on both ends to make sure that we get, reach our long-term goal or short-term, medium and long-term goal of having sustainable passenger rail service to our part of the country.
Any other comments? Thank you, John, for your support. We know, as we said, it's going to be a tough battle, but I think we can do it. Everybody working together, so I'm glad to hear you're on our side and we'll take it from there.
Okay, thank you.
And when that public meeting does come about, we'll certainly be in touch with you.
And I will attend if I'm in the area, definitely.
Yep. Thanks, John. We have a motion to accept MPP Vanthoff's report. Delegation?
Moved by Eugene Ivanov, seconded by Lad Shaba, be it resolved that the delegation from MPP John Vanthoff be received.
All in favor? Motion carried?
Thank you.
Item 4.2. North tailing storage facility. Natasha Dombrowski, Kirkland Lake Gold. Welcome, Natasha.
Thank you so much, your worship, and thank you, council, for having us today. I'm going to be sharing a slideshow that I believe was previously circulated to the group, so bear with me here. We typically use Teams and less of Zoom, so I'm just getting myself acquainted with where all the buttons and everything are. Here we go. So I believe that I'm sharing the presentation. When it comes up though, I can't unfortunately see my other screen, so if somebody could just let me know that it is up on the screen, that would be great, before I start talking.
We don't see anything yet, Natasha. I did get permission that you could share it, but I don't see it yet.
Okay, let me try one more time here. Still nothing, I presume?
So bottom middle of the Zoom, there's, on my end, it's green, it says, share screen, and then you can pick. Oh, there we go.
We've made it?
We see your desktop. There we go, we see there's the slide.
Sorry about that. All right. So again, thank you, everybody, for having me and my colleagues here tonight. A quick introduction, my name's Natasha Dombrowski. I'm the Director of Environment and Sustainability with Kirkland Lake Gold's Canadian Operations. And we wanted to chat tonight about a project that we're working on, which is our North Tailing Storage Facility, our 20-year project. So I'm going to jump right into the slides and I'm not sure what the typical format is, but we're a relatively casual group. So I don't know if questions come towards the end, but if anybody has any questions or comments as we go, please don't be shy to interrupt and jump in as we go through. So as you can see, we do have a couple of things to talk about, so I'm going to get moving. I'm sure that the group here tonight doesn't need an introduction to the Macassa Mine, but obviously, as we know, Northeastern Ontario, specifically Kirkland Lake, does have a very rich history in gold mining. Gold exploration and also mining has been going on in the region for over 100 years and we just celebrated our centennial not too long ago. Some quick stats about the Macassa Mine. So Macassa came into production originally in 1933 and it was the last of the seven great gold mines to come online. And it's actually the last that remains and is operational today, so it certainly stood the test of time. Our life of mine right now is approximately until 2027. And we do have some really exciting projects on the go, specifically with Four Shaft and our near-surface portal that are really focused on expanding that life of mine. So it's certainly exciting times on our side of the globe here. And also to accommodate production in some of these projects and to expand that life of mine, at least on paper, we do need to secure tailing storage into the future, so beyond what we have right now. So again, I'm sure that this is all a pretty, you know, known amongst the group, but very quickly, what are tailings? Tailings are a byproduct of ore that's gone through a milling process, so ore in this particular case, which has gold. So once the gold has been extracted, we are left with tailings that have to be managed. And we do so in stored engineered facilities, which are referred to as tailing storage facilities. You may have heard them be referred to as tailings management facilities, tailings management areas. They're all sort of the same concept. Tailings at the Macassa Mine are very fine-grained due to the process. And any supernatant from tailings or any potential seepage is quite low in metals. So Macassa is very fortunate in that it doesn't have to contend with some of the challenges of our peers, namely metal leaching or acid rock drainage. So our host rock is quite clean. And so clean, in fact, that this supernatant and any potential seepage does meet limits for discharge to the environment. So again, it's a very, it's a very enviable or envious position to be in. Also, any contact water that is intended to leave the site is also treated prior to discharge. So we do, we do ensure that we keep water management top of mind at the Macassa Mine. Now I have a quick slide here, talking about some of the tailings facilities in and around the site. So I'm moving my mouse, I hope that you can see here. But at the Macassa Mine right now, we have what's called the NTSF, or the North Tailing Storage Facility. And this is a five-year facility that's currently online and operational. So this area here is currently accepting tailings. And this will accommodate deposition until 2023. So the facility did come online towards the end of 2018. And I'm sure that we're all familiar with the historical Macassa TSF, so undergone quite a bit of rehab and reclamation over the past couple of years. So this facility is no longer receiving tailings and it is being brought to closure progressively. So we are working on things like seeding and cover and all that kind of good stuff. So what's the NTSF 20-year project? Well, it's a planned or proposed expansion of the current facility that will allow for an additional 15 years of tailings deposition. So, and it's demarked rather crudely by this sort of green dashed line here to give you a sense of the proposed layout. So the NTSF 20-year expansion will be approximately 50 hectares or so, which will bring the total footprint to an area of approximately 100 hectares. So just to put sort of that expansion into context, size-wise. So the NTSF 20-year will be a state-of-the-art facility, as is the current five-year. And we've listed out some of the features of the facility and I'll go through them really quickly. It will have an advanced factor of safety that exceeds the Canadian Dam Guidelines, which is one of our sort of regulators overarching guidelines that we have to meet and/or exceed. The facility does have quite extensive seepage controls in place, which includes geotextile liners, which minimizes potential seepage and leakage into which includes geotextile liners, which minimizes potential seepage and leakage into the environment, but also contains a fairly comprehensive sump pump-back system. So if there is any seepage, the sump, the sumps are in place, and there's also a ditch around the perimeter of the facility, so if there is anything that escapes, it is pumped back into the facility, so it doesn't go any further than that control. The five-year facility and also the twenty-year facility will boast what's called deep soil mixing. So this is a rather new technology when it comes to tailings deposition. So essentially, concrete pillars are drilled into the ground to improve foundation condition. So this could really be a showstopper for a lot of construction projects, especially tailings, when we need that really competent foundation condition. So we've implemented that at the five-year facility, and if we need to do so in the twenty-year, then we're going to be doing that as well. This technology is actually used in bridge projects that are slung over large water bodies, so it's, it's pretty cool. Also, the facility is equipped with a tailing thickener. So this allows us to reduce the water content in the tailings and therefore reduces overall pour water, which means that we're having to store and manage less water overall, which makes the facility safer. All of the tailings pipelines are lined and ditched as well, so which is another nice perk. And also, there's a lot of instrumentation and controls, so we have pyzometers, we have inclinometers, we have groundwater wells. So we have a very good handle on what the facility is doing with respect to movement, pour water pressure and also groundwater quality. And also really important to note that there's no proposed changes to the milling process right now. So everything that is in place right now and everything that's happening is going to continue, so there isn't going to be any significant step change there. And this also minimizes potential impacts and also reduces the requirement for increased infrastructure. So when we're talking about the NTSF twenty-year expansion, so various options were reviewed and assessed before choosing this location for the expansion. So, and there's quite a few advantages that we found when assessing the options for this particular location over others. So one of the main ones is that the area has been previously impacted by the forest fire of twenty twelve, which I'm sure that we all remember. So therefore, there is no merchantable timber in the area, so we won't have to necessarily cut any trees or any sort of significant trees. So we're looking at very minimal terrestrial impacts with this proposed expansion area. Many of the species have moved out of the area since the fire, so that's another, another consideration there. There's no bird breeding or species at risk located in the area, which is great. The expansion neighbors the current NTSF facility, so again, there's, there's an opportunity or sort of an advantage there from an infrastructure perspective. It is away from public infrastructure, so there is that visual amenity piece. So unlike sort of the Macassa, the historical facility, which you do see on the highway, this one is sort of tucked away. So if visual amenity is of interest or of value, then that is something that this expansion will provide. And there are no archaeological findings or concerns, so we did complete a phase one and phase two archaeological studies with some of our indigenous community partners, and we didn't find anything that were any showstoppers, which is also great news. And also important to note, especially for some of our local land users, there will be no changes or impudence to access in this area. So all of the trails and everything that are still in place will remain as such. We are planning to, to sort of impact any potential networks that are in the area. So, sort of the meat and the potatoes, so the reason that we're here today. The NTSF will overprint two small tributaries that are considered potential fish bearing. So I'm moving my mouse here, so these are the two unnamed tributaries right here. So because of this, the next steps are to embark on what's called a Schedule Two Amendment process as well as a Section Thirty-five authorization under the Fisheries Acts and its applicable regulations. So we don't need to get too hung up on what those regulations are. However, because we are going to be impacting fish habitat, we need to compensate and we need to do something about that that will provide a benefit to fish species. So these regulations are triggered again when there is an impact to fish and its habitat, and therefore a plan to compensate and offset is required. So that's really what we want to chat about today. We won't get too much into the details here, however, to sum it all up, the process is a federal process, so it's governed by the Department of Fisheries and Oceans. And really, it comes down to the requirement is if there's an impact to fish habitat, proponents need to offset and compensate for that. So this could look like creating new streams, creating new ponds or water bodies, improving existing fish habitat elsewhere, creating new connections or diversions to improve aquatic ecosystem. So you really are making new fish habitats, so that's where the compensation and the offset comes into play. So putting our project into context, so again, the NTSF, the twenty-year project, will need to overprint two small tributaries with tailings. So a little bit of context on the tributaries themselves. They are considered fairly low quality right now due to various barriers to fish passage. Also, the tributaries often dry up in the summer, so that's where that ephemeral characteristic comes in. So it doesn't, or these two tributaries can only provide habitat for a very select, very few fish species. So because of this, when they are overprinted, we aren't anticipating any critical impacts or loss to the local ecosystem. So they are two unnamed tributaries that connect to Amakugumi Creek, but they aren't providing any significance in a water or any habitat that way. So this is sort of a positive when we look at it. And to put it into more context, the direct habitat loss is only going to be around point six hectares, so quite small. So we're talking about offsets and compensations, so because we are going to be impacting fish habitat, we need to make new fish habitat elsewhere or provide an overall benefit to fish habitat. So what you're seeing here is really the preliminary offset concept that we've landed on. So this idea of this concept is really that there would be an additional pond area, which we're calling sort of the Kinross Pond Expansion. And this would allow for more appropriate fish overwintering habitat. So the reason that we landed on this particular concept is we've done quite a bit of studies actually on Kinross Pond, because it is a historical tailing facility, so very interested in its overall function and performance. So based on some of the, the baseline informations that we've done on Kinross Pond previously, the pond is not quite deep, it's not very deep, and because of this, the dissolved oxygen content isn't quite ideal. So it can only, again, it can only support a certain select amount of species because of this. So with this proposed expansion of the Kinross Pond, the idea right now is to make the expansion a little bit deeper, which would allow for some of that additional overwintering habitat. So as it stands right now, the required excavation depth for fish wintering is around five meters. So that's what we're going with on paper right now. We would have to confirm that that would be feasible moving forward, but that's sort of the benchmark that we've landed on right now. And because all the details, the technical details are being confirmed, you know, we're still reading through some of those nuances in terms of what exactly we would be proposing to the federal government, our indigenous communities and also our local community. But this just gives you a sense of what that concept could look like. And also important to note, you can see on the left-hand side, again, with the habitat loss with the NTSF twenty-year project, it's point six hectares. The recreated habitat that we're proposing right now is coming in at one point six five. So we're proposing an offset ratio of two point seven five to one, which is fantastic. So we would be creating more habitat, obviously, that is being impacted by the project. So why Kinross Pond? Well, there's many reasons that we think that Kinross Pond is a fantastic option for this project. Most of them are listed there, so of course, there's some, some perks in terms of infrastructure and logistics. Because this is located on municipal property, the benefit to aquatic ecosystems would be guaranteed. So this is something that we could really work together to ensure that this, this is a functioning project and we could see that benefit moving on for years to come. We do have a good understanding of the area, as I alluded to. And also the area that I think that we're the most excited about is that because it's a local feature within the community, there's a lot of potential opportunities for expanding community use, which we wanted to chit-chat a little bit more on the next slide about. And not to be presumptuous with some of the items that we have listed there, but when the project team and we were chit-chatting about some of some of the potential opportunities, you know, our minds started going and it's, there's so many potential areas that we could really focus on, but we wanted to list them here just for consideration for our discussion today. So because this is something that we are regulated to do, so we are regulated to create fish habitat, you know, we, we obviously acknowledge that, but we see this as an opportunity that can also benefit the local community. So Kinross Pond, again, was chosen because it is an integral feature of Kirkland Lake. So we, you know, myself included, love Kinross Pond for many reasons. It provides an opportunity for enhancement beyond fish habitat. So again, there's a lot of potential substantial growth opportunities with this project. And we wanted to list some of them here, so we could be looking at expanding hiking and biking trails. We would be creating a high-function ecosystem that would increase biodiversity. So think of birds, butterflies, bees. There could be opportunities for educational programs or self-guided tours. Opportunities for, you know, an additional family-friendly environment, so to encourage connecting with nature. It would be increasing the waterfront to beautify the area, there could be botanical gardens. So again, these are all just sort of options or opportunities. But just to, you know, I think that we're, we're limited by our creativity or by our imagination, so really the sky is the limit with this. So in terms of consultation with stakeholder groups, so we have obviously connected with Town of Kirkland Lake. So we started conversations back in November of last year to introduce the concept of Kinross Pond. And we've been going through that consultation with some of the, the technical team behind the scenes. Indigenous consultation is required, so there are six groups that have been identified by the regulators. So consultation is ongoing with those groups and will continue throughout the duration of the project. We have introduced the idea of Kinross Pond as a potential offset concept. And overall, it's being seen very favorably, which is great. And also ongoing consultation will be required with the feds to make sure that what we are proposing is meeting really the intent of the regulation. So the next steps for progressing Kinross Pond expansion. So what we're looking for today is an endorsement, an endorsement from council, so resolution to support the concept. So really, we can move this thing forward. So if a resolution in support of the project is received, then we need to move on with next steps. So that's when we get into some of those more technical details. A little bit of context around the twenty-year project itself. So construction of the, the twenty-year facility will need to start in twenty twenty-two, which is next year, in order to facilitate tailings deposition in twenty twenty-three. So that's when we reach capacity for the current five-year facility. So working backwards, we would like to have the final fish habitat compensation and offset plan report, which is a requirement, submitted back to DFO no later than February, so in and around Q1 of next year, to facilitate their review. So this can take upwards of a year. So things move at the pace that they do, so we're trying to, to be proactive with that timeline that we're, that we're working with. And that's all that I had to talk about today. I tried to move through, I guess, as quickly and efficiently as I could to be respectful of the timeline. So thank you, everybody, for, for allowing us an opportunity to talk about this project. Open to questions and comments from the group.
Councillor Shaba. Oh, sorry. Councillor Ivanov?
Yeah, Natasha, I like your presentation. It's, it was excellent. It's very in-depth. It's, I think the Kinross Pond idea is a great idea. It's in our community. It's going to be good for our community. Kirkland Lake Gold has been a, a great corporate citizen in our community to date, and I think with your presentation, it just makes it even better for us. Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much, councillor Ivanov Eugene. Any other questions there?
Yeah, thank you very much. And it's been a while that I've heard about ephemeral streams. As a matter of fact, for a guy that does drainage systems, we always say clever to have more ephemeral streams that I can carry any excess water now to wherever we want it. So my, my questions to you is that, I'm, I'm sure you guys will probably factor this in. You know, I, I use that Kinross a lot, and sometime when we're on the south end of that Kinross, people really feel unsafe because they can't see the road. They can't see the back of Tim Hortons. They try to rush through that corner very quickly, so that you can see everybody down and down at the back of Tim Hortons or dorms. Now, your expansion here, as I understand, is going to the south of that, right? To the very south of that, which is really very, I'm, I'm sure that you're going to stand those trails, what, what now? It's going to bury all those trails way even down deeper to the south and you will not be able to see any life over at that little park as you go in. So my question is, what are the health and safety features that you guys could have built into this so that people will at least enjoy the full length and breadth of this, of the new expansion? Thank you.
I think that those are fantastic comments, councillor. And I think, you know, coming from a personal, coming from the personal side of things, you're right. So there is an area in and around Kinross Pond where it does get dark and it does feel a little bit uncomfortable. So I think that it's a very important consideration if this were to proceed, that we did have adequate lighting or at least a means of improving that line of sight. Those kinds of details, I think that that would be, we would love to talk more with, with Town of Kirkland Lake about what the opportunities could be, whether there's some options for solar lights or if it's something that is a little bit more permanent in terms of infrastructure, but it is something that's important. We want people to utilize the, the expansion with confidence and we don't want, you know, we don't want to do something, we don't want to put something in place that the community isn't going to use because they don't feel safe. So I think that, again, the sky is the limit. If this is, if this is something that gets approved and, and council is in support of, I think that there's, there's a lot of things that we could do to make this thing seen very favorably by the community. So I think that lighting would be, would be an absolute no-brainer, for sure, for sure. And maybe we go even farther. You know, maybe it's something like there's emergency phones or maybe there's even AEDs, like there's, there's a lot of things that are going through my mind where we could really make this thing something that the community truly feels safe and, and really enjoys utilizing.
Thank you. Councillor Owen?
Hi. I, I'm really excited with the trails part of this. Any of us that have been in town, just everybody at the table, will remember a group called Trails, Trails Two Thousand, which was going to set up a whole trail system in Kirkland Lake. And they worked really hard and they were very dedicated. But ultimately, the money wasn't there. And, you know, you, you look at other communities, like Elliott Lake, those great trails. We used to have a cottage in Arillia. Now, Arillia had the old rail lines, but I mean, when my kids were younger, hey, we headed out on those trails. The, the other thing that, that excites me about this potentially is fishing. An old guy like me could take his grandsons there and drop a line and a young parent who may not have the means to get out to lakes outside of the town border would be able to take his, his young children to that, that pond and, and fish, a real bonding moment. So I, I'm pretty excited about this, this whole project and hopefully the rest of council is as excited as I am because I see that right now, when I drive around town, Kinross Pond is the most-used recreational facility I see. And it doesn't matter when I go up there. Between the, the children's playground and people just sitting, watching other people and people getting physically active, there's never a time when there's not a sizable group there. So if we can expand that, I, I think it'd be fantastic for the community. So thank you very much. Good luck and thank you, Kirkland Lake Gold.
Thank you so much, councillor.
Any other comments? I'd just like to diddle comments that councillor Owen and Shaba have stated. It's not only from a beautification standpoint, because I think it can be really done up nice. We've seen what Timmins, North Bay and Arillia's councillor Owen said. So it's going to add to the community from a beautifications point of view, driving into town, it, it's, it's an ideal spot. I think your presentation tonight was certainly thorough and you're going over and above the, the guidelines, so nothing but full support from me personally.
Thank you.
Any other comments? You're welcome. Any other comments? I think Natasha, this, we will receive the report tonight. It'll go to staff for recommendations and come back to council for approval or for review.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, thanks again for a great presentation.
Thank you again, everybody, for having us.
Thank you. We have a motion to receive. We have a motion to receive.
I currently have a motion to receive, and I was going to add in um that council supports the KAL KAL Gold Kinross Pond expansion, if you wish, or would you rather, as you noted, to say for staff to bring back their recommendation?
Let's go ahead.
As Casey Owens and seconded by Eugene Ivanov.
Yes, you can add it.
The the support or the direct?
Yes, yeah, yes, you can add the support to the project.
Okay. So I've moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Eugene Ivanov, be it resolved that the delegation from Kirkland Lake Gold be received and that council for the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake supports the KAL Gold Kinross Pond expansion.
All in favor? Motion carried. Uh, item four point three, uh Char uh Technologies Biomass uh Energy Production. Welcome Andrew White and uh Gaylor Cranston.
Thank you, your worship. Councillors, appreciate the uh the opportunity to present this evening. Um, so much like uh Natasha, I'm going to bring up a short presentation to uh give a background on Char Technologies as well as the proposed project. Uh, and uh I'll try and be as brief as I can and and uh I always like to to kind of try and leave more room for questions and and discussion. So um I'll very quickly introduce Char, who we are, and then uh we'll talk a little bit more about what we'd uh uh really like to do and and what we're quite excited about here. So with Char Technologies, we're all about uh decarbonizing for a circular economy and hopefully that uh will make uh some sense as we go through the presentation here. So a a quick introduction to the company because we are new uh to Kirkland Lake. Uh, we operate with three uh groups. One is Altech, which we provide environmental engineering services and compliance work. Uh, Char Tech Solutions is our advanced industrial clean tech. Uh, and for tonight's uh presentation, we'll really be focusing on the renewable energy aspect. And our third group is Char Biocarbon, uh which again will will come together as I go through the presentation, but it's the arm that um markets and sells our uh renewable energy products. So our uh core technology and and what we're uh looking to do uh as we expand is develop uh a number of high-temperature paralysis plants. So this graphic on the right is a graphical representation of what high-temperature paralysis is. But in uh basic terms, we're basically heating material up in the absence of oxygen. So with no oxygen present, we don't burn anything, but it gets converted into two products. One is a clean energy stream in the form of a gas. The other is a biocarbon uh which has a number of applications, but most notably is to offset coal in metallurgical uh uses. So for the purposes of tonight's discussion, what we're uh going to be reviewing is that third feedstock on the bottom right, taking wood, uh processing it through our high-temperature paralysis unit and creating these output products. This is what a high-temperature paralysis plant looks like. So this is our facility in London, Ontario. Uh, to give you a sense of scale, there's a mandor uh in beside it. And the key, I think, on this slide about the technology is that it's self-sustaining. So we feed it with things like uh, you know, uh bark or hog fuel. Uh, we can take sawdust chips uh if the market uh supports it. And we create this gas. Now, part of the gas runs the kiln itself, so we've got some burners. We make this gas, we put it in the burners to run the plant, and then we've got excess gas available uh to upgrade into uh renewable natural gas. Uh, and the other output, as I said, is is some of these carbon products, and most importantly is the bottom right here, this clean fire. But what this allows us to do is develop a uh value-added um carbon negative process. And clean fire, as I said, is one of our outputs, so we have recently uh received a purchase order for a thousand tons of the product from one of uh the large Southern Ontario steel mills. And we're looking to continue to expand our production capabilities to fulfill those orders. And the reason the steel industry is really interested in something like a biocoal, uh our clean fire uh product, is that one ton of coal, when it's consumed, produces three tons of greenhouse gas emissions. One ton of our biocoal replaces one ton of coal, so it's it's basically a drop-in replacement. It's a one-for-one swap. Uh, but one ton of coal doesn't produce any greenhouse gas emissions. And the really important point here is that uh steel mills don't really have an option. Uh, metal smelters don't really have an option to switch to something the size of solid carbon because they use it for more than just energy. They use it for the chemical reactions needed uh to refine those uh metallurgical products, be it steel or or nickel or copper or the like in a smelting uh type of process. And this is a picture of uh Arslar Middle Defasco's facility in Hamilton and and kind of the large volumes of of coal they go through. Um, in Ontario, the three big steel mills go through over one point seven million tons of coal per year. And they'd like to change, they'd like to uh decarbonize, but they don't have a lot of other options besides uh products like ours. I mentioned earlier that we produce two products always, one is a solid, one is a gas. So we have two options from our gas stream. So I'll talk a little bit about the green hydrogen aspect. So this is um more for another project, but I think it's a, it's really interesting. So we produce a gas that we can convert into green hydrogen. This little graphic at the bottom is the Ontario Hydrogen Strategy Plan, and it's showing that uh biomass into green hydrogen is recognized as a pathway, so people understand it. It counts as renewable green hydrogen. And we recently announced uh two weeks ago building our first uh green hydrogen project in California. So this is a picture of Hitachi, Zozan and Nova's um biogas plant. So they take food waste, they make electricity. We take some of their fiber uh byproduct, so instead of, you know, things like hog fuel, in this case, it's more like a compost. Um, but it it's quite fibrous, very kind of woody-like. And we process that and convert it into green hydrogen, uh which we're obviously very, very excited about, uh as this will be our first uh US installation. For Kirkland Lake, uh the intention is to convert that gas into renewable natural gas. Um, so if anyone's familiar with the concept of renewable natural gas, it's historically made from from food waste. They go in these big digestion tanks and they make methane gas, which is what's in renewable natural gas. But what's important is uh provinces like Quebec and British Columbia to start with are both implementing mandates as to how much renewable natural gas needs to be in their gas grids. And a recent study done by Energier uh for the Quebec market showed that over eighty percent of the renewable natural gas needed to get their grid up to that ten percent requirement would have to come from biomass. It can't come from landfills or wastewater treatment plants or food waste because there's just not enough of that in the province. So being located right next door to this uh fairly significant market for renewable natural gas uh is is quite advantageous. The other point on the uh tr- transition into renewable natural gas is this bottom quote here. And the important parts are the highlights, and that is uh Fortis B C, the the larger uh gas utility in British Columbia, also has a blending target. That target would need thirty-five to forty pentajoules of renewable natural gas. So pentajoules, a million gigajoules, it's a unit of energy. And across the entire country in two thousand nineteen, only six was produced. So those numbers are similar uh for Quebec where the mandate is. So there's a huge demand for renewable natural gas into the uh natural gas grids. So what would we uh like to propose to do in Kirkland Lake? It's to construct a two-module high-temperature paralysis facility. So this is picture here is what a module looks like. And for us, it's very important that we approach this from a modular basis. So all of these equipment components can be built uh in a factory, factory acceptance tested, put into a shipping container and brought to site where they're assembled. So we can deploy very quickly because we don't need to construct the whole plant on site. We just need to uh assemble that plant on site. This plant would produce half a million gigajoules of renewable natural gas and ten thousand tons per year of our biocoal uh for the metallurgical industry. Uh, we would process about seventy-six thousand uh tons per year of biomass. Uh, to put that in context, uh the uh Kirkland Lake Power uh facility, when operating at capacity, goes through on the order of three hundred thousand tons per year uh of biomass. The intended offtake is uh to Energier because it's right next door and they have this mandate and the clean fire into either Ontario Steel or Quebec metallurgical uh applications. This is what uh again, a single module looks like now from a top-down, just to give you a sense of space requirements. One module takes about ninety-five hundred square feet, and to start with, we're looking to to construct two to produce that much um gas energy. So what does the overall project look like? What does, you know, five hundred thousand gigajoules per year of RNG mean? It's about the average consumption of five thousand five hundred Ontario homes if they're connected to the gas grid. Uh, certainly, there's, I think, a great opportunity to grow uh the RNG production hub uh in Kirkland Lake to service local industrial gas uh customers as well. Uh, this project in its initial stages would reduce greenhouse gas emissions by over sixty thousand tons a year, which is roughly the equivalent of removing thirteen thousand cars from the road each and every year. And we do have an intention to further expand the plant once those first two modules uh are built and operational. And we process about seventy-six thousand tons per year of biomass, and we're very open to the type of biomass, so we're very happy taking barks and hog fuels and and those kind of lower-value streams that uh may need to find a home. Uh, like I said, initially, it's a two-module system. Um, the modules limit a lot of this onsite commissioning risk. Once revenue is generating, it's a lot easier to add modules, so we don't have to go for a big, you know, a hundred-million-dollar project right off the bat. We can go uh much more reasonable from an investment perspective, have the plant running, have it cash flowing, and then uh expand it, which um will, like I said, allow us to deploy much more rapidly. The the initial two-module system will create about ten full-time jobs. Um, additional indirect uh jobs in transportation or logistics of biomass uh and and biomass accessibility. And I think there's a great opportunity now for Kirkland Lake to become a hub uh for maintenance teams to service, you know, future sites in either northeastern Ontario or north-northern Quebec, where we're looking to continue to expand. Uh, so with that, I'd love to uh thank everyone uh for the opportunity again uh and happy to uh answer any questions anyone may have.
Councillor Ivanov.
No, Andrew, I'm excited. I uh I listened to your presentation twice now. It's a, it's an amazing presentation. Uh, you have. I mean, it just sounds like this is the future, and this is where we, as Kirkland Lake, we've been looking for a future. This was uh something that I think our our town can use. Uh, and certainly I support. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councillor White.
I guess your presentation is amazing and and certainly numerous positives uh in it. I was actually thinking while we were talking um with the possibility of a hub up north, you could partner with our local college as well, who's always looking for micro credentials. So the possibilities are really endless once you get to here. Uh, supporting the circular economy, we all know uh is imperative to combat things like climate change, biodiversity loss, waste pollution. And you're just so excited that you chose Kirkland Lake as your location. Um, and I certainly look forward to hearing from you shortly, hopefully, uh if all pending uh pending approvals come back. So thank you so much for your time. Amazing job, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Uh, councillor Owen.
Yeah, thank you. Um, as you know, I'm already on board with this project. I think it's it's fantastic. Uh, and like I say, like I said last time when I heard it, uh the fact that there's no combustion uh with oxygen is a big plus for me and should be a a very good selling point. And I'm not going to tell you how to run your business because I can't even, I have a hard enough time running my own life. So I would make a suggestion. Um, this is new technology. And there is sort of a mixed history in Kirkland Lake about new things coming to town, and I'll I'll leave it at that. I would suggest, provided that COVID uh restrictions uh ease off, that you would consider coming to Kirkland Lake and and putting on a public presentation. Um, because we're a small town. We like to meet people face-to-face, and you two are the face of the company. And uh I'm sure when people see that and meet the representatives, any that would would be somewhat uncomfortable would be assured that this is a good project. I'm very excited. I can't wait. And uh I know as a council, I I I'm pretty safe on saying that that uh we will do everything that we can to uh make your arrival in Kirkland Lake as smooth as possible. So thank you very much.
We uh we very much appreciate that and and are absolutely looking forward to restrictions lifting and and the ability to come up and and present uh in a more public forum. Uh, we're hoping to be able to present in person to uh tonight's council meeting, but uh unfortunately, the restrictions are are lingering a little bit, but um I appreciate the the advice and and absolutely, we're looking forward to coming up uh as soon as we can.
Councillor Shaba.
Thank you very much uh for your excellent presentation. Um, I'd like to know if you have uh, you must have timelines with respect to uh the actual, you know, shovel in the ground, as they call it, uh in Kirkland Lake. All things being equal, you know, things go your way in terms of other stuff that you have to uh you have to do to make it happen. So what are we looking at tentatively anyways in in terms of when people will see a a lot of uh uh action uh on the ground? And number two, may maybe mark to the staff, you know, if Wilt was joining us today, have have they uh, any one of them visited your plant in London and uh you know, maybe something that they could let us know, the uh uh how big that plant is and uh how ours will be comparable to that, maybe one-tenth of that, maybe half of that or whatnot. So uh can you uh share that information with us, please?
Thank you. Uh, absolutely, and and our intention is to be producing uh renewable natural gas by the fourth quarter of two thousand twenty-three. So we do want to get moving relatively quickly. Um, we are uh in process with what we can do, um, you know, before uh tonight's council meeting and before securing the site. Um, you know, we we have kind of a about a sixty-week uh timeframe to build and deliver the equipment, uh which is well within that that uh timeframe I just quoted of getting gas production by two thousand twenty-three, the end of two thousand twenty-three. Um, you know, and we're starting all the permitting processes. So that's usually the longest lead time item. Um, and certainly, as soon as permits are available, we want to um start moving on this as quickly as possible. Um, in terms of scale and and size, the the picture I showed in my presentation, the Southern Ontario plant uh processes approximately seven hundred and fifty kilograms of biomass per hour, so just shy of a ton an hour. Uh, each of the modules, and and remember, we're planning to install two, each one uh will be able to process three and a half tons per hour. So it's not sort of a ten-X scale-up, but it is certainly bigger and uh for a couple of technical reasons, it it to us makes a lot more sense to do multiple modules instead of trying to build a bigger and bigger uh single facility or a single piece of equipment.
Andrew, uh for curiosity, from a job creation standpoint, uh employment-wise, how many people would uh, when you're up and running, would it take?
Yeah, we see the initial job numbers at around ten um for the first two kilns, and then there's an opportunity to expand that in in two fronts. One is expanding the plant itself, where we'll need some additional uh support and operations. Uh, and the second is because of the the modularity of the system, uh we are looking at future expansion opportunities. we are looking at future expansion opportunities in northeastern Ontario and northwestern Quebec where we can still have access to these really good markets. And so, you know, we are certainly looking and hoping to find a hub for, you know, maintenance groups that can service multiple sites from a single location. But the initial two-kiln system is approximately 10.
Good news. Any other comments or question? Sorry.
Yeah, many of the problems that we're facing up here would be the skills shortage. And I take it that you will be requiring specialized skill set. So how do you plan on procuring those specialized skill set? Or do you plan on maybe organically grow them in our community as opposed to bringing them in from certain areas?
Yeah, and hopefully that's something that we can continue to collaborate on is how do we, you know, potentially collaborate with the college to start to grow these, these skill sets? Certainly, there's, you know, assembly and commissioning requirement, but then ongoing operations and, you know, ongoing maintenance is something that we need to consider. So I would absolutely love to continue to, you know, collaborate with the council and understand how we can address that and ensure that there is, you know, a good base of talent to ensure the successful operation of the facility.
That's good news again. Any other comments? Thank you, gentlemen. Very well presented. As we said, we've seen some of us a couple of times. Very professional and detailed and certainly an interesting topic. And we love the part about diversification in our economy. So it'd be a great welcome to the community.
Fantastic. Appreciate your worship and appreciate it, councilors, this evening. Thank you.
We have motion. Megan.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that the delegation from Char Technologies be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item five, acceptance of minutes and recommendations.
Moved by Eugene Ivanov, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that council approve the minutes of the following meetings, minutes of the regular meeting of council held August 10, 2021, and that council accept the minutes from the following committee meetings, minutes of the Tech Pioneer Residence Committee of Management Meeting held May 17, 2021.
Any questions? None noted. All in favor? Motion carried. Item six, A, we'll call it, COVID update, Ms. Sackrider.
Thank you, your worship, through you to council. On September 1st, the provincial government indicated that as of September 22nd, Ontarians will need to be fully vaccinated, which is two doses plus 14 days, and provide proof of their vaccination along with photo ID to access certain public settings and facilities. For Town of Kirkland Lake operations, this will include meeting and event spaces, facilities used for sports and fitness activities, and personal training such as gyms, fitness and recreation facilities, with the exception of youth recreational sport and sporting events. Individuals who cannot receive the vaccine due to medical exemptions will be permitted entry with a doctor's note until recognized medical exemptions can be integrated as part of a digital vaccine certificate. Children who are 11 years of age and younger and unable to be vaccinated will also be exempted from these requirements. As of September 22nd, Ontarians will be required to show their vaccine receipt when entering designated settings along with another piece of photo identification such as a driver's license or a health card. Ontario will also introduce a digital vaccine receipt that features a QR code. In addition, the province will launch a new app to make it easier and more convenient for our families to read and verify, sorry, for our facilities to read and verify that a digital vaccine receipt is valid while protecting the individual's privacy. If you're looking for more specifics on any of the information about vaccination requirements in specific facilities, I do encourage you to visit the ontario.ca website. And there's specifically a page entitled "New Requirement for Proof of Vaccination in Certain Settings", frequently asked questions. A number of things that came to mind are answered in that area. When the accompanying order that does reflect this information is released from the province, we will have more information on whether the fully vaccinated requirement is in effect for staff as well as participants in meeting and recreational settings, and if the requirement is in effect for all sizes of meetings or events. This right now has not been indicated. In the meantime, to allow council to sit together in chambers and allow others to participate virtually, there are a number of technological investments that will be required. It is beyond staff's capacity to determine what this will involve for tonight. However, additional information will be provided to council in the future. Staff do continue to review all legislation, recommendations, and instructions provided by public health officials from the local, provincial, federal, and world levels, and are savoring small and rural municipalities across the province in regards to both meeting procedures and vaccination policies. As the province provides clear specifications in the coming weeks, updates will be provided. A bit more information about what Ms. Elliott mentioned earlier in the meeting regarding masking. So masks are required by legislation in indoor workplaces. If the workplace is restricted entirely to employees, masks may not be required if distancing is maintained and ventilation is enhanced. Where the semantics become a little gray is whether a councillor is an employee or visitor to the facility. So when we look at the municipal act, it does indicate that councillors are not considered employees. We also look to see what other municipalities are doing and we often see that mask-wearing in council meetings is being mandated in some of our other small and rural municipalities. So to err on the side of caution for tonight, I do recommend that you continue to wear your masks. I will retain or obtain clarification on Friday's COVID municipal meeting with Dr. Cornell, if that will continue to be a requirement. Are there any questions that I may answer regarding COVID?
Unnoted.
Thank you very much.
We have a motion to receive.
Moved by Casey Owen, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that the verbal COVID-19 update be received?
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six, Reports of Municipal Officers and Communications on Char Technologies, Wilfred Haas, Director of Economic Development.
Thank you, your worship, through you through council. As you have just had the opportunity to see the presentation from Char Technologies, I think you can understand it is a magnificent opportunity for Kirkland Lake moving forward. The company is in the process, as Mr. White said, of putting its applications in and doing all the necessary backend work that will result in the facility. Part of this will be applications for funding. It would be of assistance to them if council could pass a resolution stating that it was in support of Char Technologies' plans to establish a biomass-to-energy production facility in Kirkland Lake. That resolution would also benefit the town in the future as we will be approaching the senior levels of government for assistance in developing the area in Archer Drive Industrial Park to host the facility. I don't have a specific timeline on that right now because there are a number of other factors that have to be worked out. But this will be something that I would anticipate we would be putting applications in in the next budget year. The resolution from council will benefit the company therefore, as well as our own applications for funding. The impact on the community, as Mr. White pointed out, is employment, contribution to the local industry through diversification, as well as supporting local companies. Municipalities Community Improvement Plan was an important component in our discussions with Char. And I think that we can expect that the company will want to take advantage of the opportunities within the Community Improvement Plan. That could be for a tax deferral, environmental assessments, et cetera. That is a benefit to the town because it does demonstrate to other potential investors and companies that are looking for expansion that the assistance is available and that Kirkland Lake is a willing host community. So to conclude, I would appreciate if we could pass that resolution or a statement to that effect that we are supporting Char Technologies' business financing Kirkland Lake.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Any questions or concerns from council? Maybe we have a motion of support. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Shaba.
Okay, yeah, my question that I guess I asked them a while ago, I mean, is more or less for you. Have you visited the site in London or if not, do you plan to visit the plant to at least have a feel for the operation that's down there?
Yes, that is the plan, pending again what is happening with COVID in the future.
Okay, that's a good idea. Okay, we'll go ahead with that motion.
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that report number 2021-dev-035, entitled Char Technologies be received? And that council for the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake supports Char Technologies and their plans to establish a biomass-to-energy production facility in Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.2, Ontario Northland Engagement Session Follow-Up. Ms. Elliott, Town Clerk.
Thank you, worship, through you to council. As we were discussing with Mr. Vantoff, we had an engagement session with some staff from ONR and they provided basically a follow-up survey, you can call it, to complete. So I've confirmed with them, on attachment one, it says that you're supposed to complete it within two weeks of our session, but I've confirmed with them that the date given as of September 17th will be okay for them. So what I'm recommending is for councilors to take this questionnaire survey, whichever you'd like to call it, maybe engage with the public, talk to one another. Whoever wants to complete one and submit it to me, then I'll make sure it gets passed on to the ONR staff.
Any questions, concerns? Counselor White.
Sorry, can I have a printed copy of that if you wouldn't mind, Megan?
Sure can.
Make it two.
Lad said make it two.
Make it three.
And Eugene said make it three.
Make it, make it four.
I will print out copies for everybody. So I'll print that up and distribute that to you. And I'm just asking on there if you can give me your submissions by Friday the 17th and then when I am back on the 20th or the 21st, once I'm coming back from holidays, and I'll pass it along.
Okay. Counselor Ivanov.
I like Counselor Shaba. I'm a little hurt that they would ask Kirkland Lake to have to provide this documentation when places like Inglehart and Matheson didn't have to. It just seems kind of foolish that the largest community in the area has to provide that. It is insulting. And I, you know, as a community, it's insulting that we have to somehow respond to the ONR and prove to them that Kirkland Lake is bigger than Inglehart or bigger than Matheson. I think they can just look at a census somewhere and maybe calculate that. I just, it is insulting. So just my comments.
Counselor Owen.
I think the fact that they didn't know Swastika was part of Kirkland Lake. And I'm not being, like, I don't want to be nicked down on the ONR, but whoever did the research for them obviously didn't dig very deep. So I look at this now as an opportunity to show them, hey, Swastika is part of Kirkland Lake. Historically, Kirkland Lake was very important to the ONR. If you talk to, like, the, well, there's no Kaplan's around anymore, or some of them, and talk about the amount of goods that came into that train station in the early days of Kirkland Lake, it was phenomenal. And they all went there and picked up all their merchandise for all their general stores and their fur stores and their leather goods stores and whatever was here. So I think I'll get over my hurt or disappointment. But I think now we have an opportunity to literally put Kirkland Lake on the map and let the ONTC know that we're not a little village called Swastika. We're the second biggest community in Timiscaming and we need service. Thank you.
Agreed. Counselor Casey Owen.
I just want to reiterate something that Mr. Vantoff said, that we have to be careful to make the difference between the ONR and the Ministry of Transportation. This was not initiated by the ONR. This was initiated by the Ministry of Transportation as a political gesture to gain political capital in the election that's coming up in June or whenever Mr. Ford decides to declare. So just before we lash out at ONR, this is not ONR necessarily. This might be the Ministry of Transportation that, for whatever reason, avoided Kirkland Lake. And it might be ridership. There's a lot of factors, but just we have to be careful between the ONR and Ministry of Transportation.
Well put. We'll go ahead with that motion.
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that memorandum number 2021-clk-019m, entitled Ontario Northland Engagement Session Follow-Up be received? And that any member of council that wishes to submit responses can do so to the clerk for submission to ONR by September 17, 2021.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.3, Federal Stat Holiday, National Day of Truth and Reconciliation. Ms. Cassandra Young, HR Supervisor.
Thank you, your worship, and through you to council. So as you may or may not have heard, we've got a federal, the federal government has recently passed legislation to make September 30th a federal stat holiday called the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. Currently, our provincial government has not yet decided if they will be following our federal government. So at this time, individual employers can still decide to observe the federal stat holiday. In the past, the municipality has chosen to observe Easter Monday, Civic Holiday, and Remembrance Day, which are all federal stat holidays but not provincial. But just to note, as you may or may not remember, that Remembrance Day has just recently been removed from this list, but we've given staff an additional floater instead. So at this point, if council chooses to observe this holiday, it should be noted that there would be non-budgeted incremental costs at an estimated amount of $30,000. Right now, staff are recommending that council receive this report, but thought should be given to either hold off until provincial government has made a decision, choose not to observe the holiday unless the provincially, unless provincial government has decided otherwise, or choose to observe the holiday. So I am open to answer questions, should there be any. Thank you.
Counselor Owen.
Yes, through the mayor. Do we have, is there anything in any of the union contracts that would cover this?
So if we were to decide to observe it, we would have to talk to all of our unions to let them know that that would be added to our list of paid public holidays. There's nothing on there saying that we have to observe the federal, but I would assume that we would be observing if it was provincial.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor White.
And how would this $30,000 be dealt with if we are going to move forward tonight and observe this holiday?
I don't see our I don't see our deputy treasurer here today. Sorry about that. Um so I don't, I can get you, I can look into that answer and I can bring it back to you if you'd like.
Well, we do have uh reserve for uh uh reserve funds for over budget items, something like this comes up and not planned for, so I would assume that would be maybe we could confirm that come out of that fund reserve.
Counselor White.
I'm fine as long as we know that. Yeah, we definitely have contingency plans for something like this. Um I wasn't going to make a big, long speech, but um I do believe we are doing a disservice to our community members by not acknowledging a brief history of um why this holiday came to be. Uh the the designation of this day is uh in response to one of the Truth and Reconciliation ninety-four calls to action and is meant to honor survivors, their families and communities. Considering recent news and the recovery of thousands of um children that were lost to cruel, abusive and torturous actions of the men and women um employed at residential schools, I think this is something very small that our community can do as positive community members for those First Nations that we share the community with. Thirty thousand dollars is very small and uh I hope my fellow council members feel the same that this is a small action. Uh we can't take back what was done in the past, but we can certainly take actions today to reconcile.
Okay. But Counselor Ivanov.
Yeah, I like Counselor White. I think it's important that we recognize our uh our indigenous community. I think the uh there's there's a substantial uh population in Kirkland Lake and around Kirkland Lake. Uh I think that we have ignored them for far too long and it's time that uh I mean, I, it's sad to think that we have to do this, but it's, you know, now that it's it's part of our history, I think it's important that we do recognize it and I support the spending of the thirty thousand. That's what it's going to cost us to um recognize that holiday here at Town Hall.
Yeah, but I might mention, uh Counselor White, we did have representation for the uh parade that they had uh from, can't remember the lady's name from out west that was running from here to well, from Saskatchewan to Ottawa. Uh and it was a pretty good turnout uh from local citizens, non-indigenous and and the indigenous groups in the area, so uh but this is just a small j- gesture, uh thirty thousand dollars. It's it it's like Counselor Ivanov says, it's a pretty sad day that uh we have to be going through this because we think of our country as a of of freedom and and uh nondiscriminatory, but uh what took place was horrible. Should never happen again. Counselor Owens.
Yeah, just on a personal note, I'd like to say that this past year, six months, whatever it's been um has been a real eye-opener for me. I knew about residential schools and I knew that the church that I belong to, the United Church of Canada, was involved. I knew the Catholic Church was involved and I believe the Anglican Church was involved. I had no idea that this practice went on to, I believe it's nineteen eighty-six, ninety-six. To me, it was something that historic happened, you know, like eighteen sixty-seven to nineteen hundred or something. I had no, no understanding, no education that this went on for such a long, long period of time. Um one friend of mine, a T friend, he told me about his experience and um he he grew up in in northern Manitoba and he was telling me that uh up there, they spoke what he calls Swamp Cree. So it's some form of Cree slang, I guess. And him and a buddy of his who he said had red hair and was Scandinavian uh uh descent, his parents were immigrants, were both threatened with being sent to residential school if they did not stop speaking Swamp Cree at their school. And that struck home for me, but this man was a little bit older than me. So again, it was sort of in a historic perspective. I I've I'm ashamed and embarrassed that this practice was carried on for so long. And I'm also ashamed and embarrassed that it was never spoken about, that our governments did it without telling us. I mean, it wasn't common knowledge, let's put it that way. And so if we vote tonight in observing this holiday, I would be in favor of it. If we vote not to observe the holiday, then I would recommend that we contact our indigenous uh brothers and sisters in the community and put up displays at all our public buildings. And maybe we should do that anyways ahead of the holiday. Um because I'm sure I'm not the only one that had their eyes open in the past six months, eight months. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh Counselor Owens.
Uh I work in the i- in the public school system and most public school systems on Ontario, in Ontario have taken a leap forward in recognizing what has happened in the past. And and I think the municipal sector is lagging far, far behind on this one and so is the province as a government in certain aspects. So I'd like to push it. I I'm in favor of observing this and I'd like to, I I don't know who's the mover, who's the seconder on this one, but to add if we can petition the government of Ontario to also do what is right and recognize what has been done in the past like we do in the school system in Ontario. And ask other municipalities in Ontario to do the same thing.
Good point. But Counselor Shaba.
Yeah, uh I'm in support of this motion here. Uh I think the way is written here said be received. I don't see uh approval here, but maybe that would be the next step. So um is there a way we could do the two tonight? Uh not only receive this, but just get it over with, approve of it? Um I don't know who the mover is, but that's something I will put on the table. And also, I I'm I came from the uh, well, came because I left the uh post-secondary institution this past June and uh my other chapeau there have been forefront of making sure that um uh the native voices are heard. And you know, when my kids, when they come home, say, we're learning about their culture, I'd say, no, you're learning about our culture. Everybody's culture. So um this is really uh I'm new to the municipal setting. Uh it could well be that um they're lagging behind because I don't know what's going on. But what I really like to do uh is, what I thought to suggest is that there would be a lot of uh uh educationals for for staff and uh uh about uh, you know, uh issues relating to our our indigenous brothers and sisters. I work with the indigenous community in my private firm, Left and Right Center, and mayor was right. I was at the end, tail end of that rally there. I went to the Beaver House and the pink uh uh one before that. So I think this is just a uh a small thing and it's a big thing for us to do, small but big to their community uh to not to recognize this. But I would also like to see uh maybe it's happening, I don't know, uh staff, because in my college, yes, we do have that whereby we have speakers uh professional development speakers that would come in and uh talk to us about uh some of the contemporary issues and also some of the past issues that you refer to. So um I I like to see that have happening within the organization so that people are very sensitive to those things, they're aware of it. Uh there will be inclusiveness of views and indigenous views and respect and that's that's what people look for. So I like to see this one, if it's possible, not only received, but if everybody agreed to just approve of it and get it over with. Thank you.
Uh Megan, could we incorporate uh Counselor Owens and Counselor Shaba's uh of points that they made and as an approval, a a motion? For approval.
So I have it moved by Casey Owens and seconded by Eugene Ivanov and I was just wondering, do you want the wording to be to implement the holiday or to have staff report back with how to do it financially?
No, I think we wanted to go ahead with this.
Okay, and then I will read, I will read out what I have just from conversations and Counselor Owens as the mover, if you can let me know if this sounds okay. Um so moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Eugene Ivanov. Be it resolved that report number twenty twenty-one dash HR dash zero one twelve entitled federal statutory holiday, National Day for Truth and Reconciliation be received. That staff be directed to implement this holiday, that staff be directed to petition the government of Ontario to further recognize what has been done and that staff be directed to circulate this motion to other Ontario municipalities.
Yep, that sounds good to me. No further discussion. All in favor? Motion carried.
Um Megan, uh where do I go? To that door, is the item is coming?
Item six point four, awarding of the RFP four ninety-three sixteen two oh two one, construction services for the Swastika Water Patrol uh pollution control plant, decommissioning and sewer system connection. Director Jim Norman, or Roman, sorry, Director Public Works.
Uh thank you, your worship through you to council. Um before I get started, I just want to say that I'm not the guy responsible for naming this contract. I would have gone something with a lot shorter title. Um okay, background, this project uh consists of converting the Swastika Water Pollution Control Plant into a sewage lift station and then building a two hundred millimeter sanitary force main from from the plant first to the Swastika Lift Plant at Riverside next to the Duck Pond. Uh continuing on from there to the Chappie Hughes Lift Station at the intersection of Archer and Highway Six and then continuing with the force main, ultimately down Archer Drive to our new sewage treatment plant. Um it it also consists of retrofitting the the Swastika and the Chappie Hughes Lift Stations uh to accommodate the the increase in flow. Um the project dates back to two thousand and sixteen when uh two-thirds funding was secured through the Building Canada Fund. Um the original project estimate before HST was eight million thirty-four thousand dollars. Um initially, we were hoping to completely decommission the Swastika uh water pollution control plant and replace it with a with a lift station. Um however, when the requests for bids went out in twenty twenty, uh the lowest bid came in well over budget. And so the RFP was canceled and uh the project redesigned to eliminate um the Culver Park Pumping Station and to utilize the the existing Swastika plant as a lift station. This went out for bids again and closed on August sixteenth. Uh the lowest bid rece- received was from Peterson Construction in the amount of seven million six hundred ninety-three thousand three hundred and ten dollars. Um this is within three percent of the uh the estimate, so it was quite close. Um that, I believe that council has previously been informed and always had in the back of the minds that uh the project would require some sort of loan uh in in order for it to go forward. And then it, in fact, if you refer to our approved capital budget for twenty twenty-one, it shows that uh eight point one seven five million dollars was actually budgeted this year for for this project. Un- unfortunately, when I looked into it further, the um the amount uh was to be drawn from uh the funding, which which has already been drawn down. So it 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 leaves a budget shortfall of a million three hundred ninety-three thousand of seven hundred forty dollars. Um so that's what we're here to discuss tonight. Um I I should note that included in the project is a cash allowance for a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh this is for known project variables and uh like likely to be spent. However, there's also a six hundred thousand dollar contingency allowance in in the project. Um in in my opinion, it's quite conservative. Um in in the past, we've we've gone uh through major projects uh like like rebuilding Government Road uh from from Duncan to Kirkland Street um on on a three per three percent contingency. Um this six hundred thousand dollar uh contingency is is approaching eight nine percent, so it's quite generous. So um we we get to the point now, um what what are the options for for going ahead with this project? Um I I'm recommending that um council uh approves the securing of a of a loan which which could then be um um a- added to the water budget. I I've included some sample uh projected loan payments here uh to be considered. I've broken it down, what the the one point four million dollar loan, what the impact of that would be uh as well as uh breaking it down to into a hundred thousand dollar increments. Um so for alternatives, um council could elect to to cancel the contract altogether. Um but um I I this this is not a good alternative. Um it's unlikely that we could go back out for tenure and see a better price and not likely we could trim anything from it without it completely losing uh functionality. Uh as an alternative, we could award this project without the proposed upgrades to the Chappie Hughes Pumping Station. Now, this this would reduce the Peterson bid by approximately six hundred twelve thousand dollars. Um however, there's consequences with doing this. Um the Chappie Hughes Pumping Station is uh degrading and it's in need of repair. It doesn't have backup power. And i- if we were to go in this direction, um there would be no additional capacity available uh to allow for development along either Highway sixty-six or Archer Drive uh until until this work was done. So if council was to consider this as an option, um the work would have to be done in in the near future. Um we we also have a wastewater capital uh works reserve fund right now projected to be about four hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars. And uh I I've held off in some redundant spending um which would push this reserve over the half a million dollar mark. So in a nutshell, we we need approximately one point four million. Um there's the loan alternative, there's the six hundred thousand dollars by not doing the work at Chappie Hughes. There's the approximately five hundred thousand in reserves. And then there's the six hundred thousand dollar contingency, which I believe uh should should you reduce that contingency to a five percent uh contingency, which is reasonable. Um you you could reduce the projected cost here by about two hundred fifty thousand dollars. That's not to say things won't and may may not come up, but um I don't see a need for a contingency of that amount, at least for this year and um going forward into next year, I guess we could be addressed at that time. So I'm ready for questions, if anyone has any questions?
Counselor Owens, it's never fun when you realise that you have a project that's in different stages of commencing and you're short money, but I don't think we have a choice. Cutting corners is never a good thing in the long run. Anybody that's done any type of home renovation product project in the past year or so knows that prices of just about everything has gone up, so as much as I don't like having to say this, I don't like it, but we don't, I feel like we don't have a choice. We have to okay this loan and, and finally get this project started. And like, we've been talking about it for a long time. I don't think it'd be smart of us to jeopardise funding and go, go backwards from this.
Great. Counselor Ivanoff?
Yeah, I'm of the same frame of mind. I think we have to get this project going. Getting a loan for it is, makes some sense to me. Pedersen Contracting have done work in Kirkland Lake over the last 30, 40 years, and they do amazing work. I think they're a great contractor and I think we'll be quite happy with, with the work they do. They've probably been the best water contractor in this area. They're installing water pipes and sewer. I think they'll do a great job for us. And I think, you know, and things aren't going to get cheaper. I think if we wait a year or two or three, we're going to see this eight million go to 12 or 13 million. So some future council will have to deal with this.
Okay. Counselor White?
I definitely support both council members. This can't, you've kicked down the road. And we can't cut corners because that will close off expansion on that entire corridor. And this council is all about being innovative and increasing our economy. And if we shut down that corridor, well, we're talking on the both sides of our moat. My only question is, what are the benefits of doing a loan rather than using the reserves and saying the proceeds of Heritage North Sale? What would be the benefits of using a loan rather than using reserves and monies that we already have in pocket?
Well, I, I wouldn't recommend drawing down your reserves to zero. I would think you would want to maintain some sort of balance in the reserve account for other unforeseen situations. Money is being offered, money is cheap these days, interest rates are low. And it's, it's an opportunity to spread the cost out over, over a good term. I know that infrastructure loans, they're offering up to 30-year terms. In, in what I presented here, a 20-year loan of the entire amount would, would result in a less than 2% increase on a typical water wastewater bill. But again, certainly council could make this up a number of ways. You can draw a portion down from the reserves and lower the, the proposed contingency fund. And then, and then arrange a loan for balance, so.
Counselor White?
No, thank you very much, Jim, for that explanation. I really do appreciate the benefits of what you proposed or definitely care when you lay it out. So thank you very much for that.
Counselor Ivanoff?
Yeah, I like Counselor White. I'm interested in, I know we're going to be talking about the money from Heritage North. And I, you know, it's nice to have some, some money in reserve. And I don't think we should take all our money out of reserve and spend it. But that was a bit of a windfall for us, and it may be something we have to look at in order to, and I know it's going to be talked about, I think it might be next or second next item on our agenda, so. Thanks very much for your presentation, Jim.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah. I'm not in favour of borrowing any more money than we absolutely have to. As Mr Roman, Director Roman has said, well, with an amount of 2% increase. But the number of people that approached me about the amount they pay for their water and sewage in this town, I don't want to be upping that another 2%. People aren't happy about, at least the people that are talking to me, are not happy about that. You know, when I'm looking at my own personal finances, if I have the money to pay cash, why would I not pay cash? Otherwise, I'm paying the bank whatever interest rate they're charging. So when I approach things from the council table, and this is a hard service. This is something that we've committed to, we've had a couple of extensions. We have to move on it or risk losing the funding we have in place, is my understanding. But if we have the cash on hand, why not use it and cut the overall costs that ratepayers are going to be paying? We still owe money on TPR. We still owe money on the swimming pool. We have an opportunity here to not increase what we owe by another $1.4 million. I also agree with Jim that we should not draw the reserves down to zero. That makes absolute sense. So I like the idea of, of taking the $799,000 from the sale of Heritage North, plus a portion of the reserve fund, leaving what Director Roman would recommend to be a feasible amount left in that account. Because we, we don't know his job, we don't, we don't know the system. We have to rely on Mr Roman, which I do with full faith, that he would come back, he would recommend an amount that is real. And then if we have to borrow a little bit, or we have to cut back on the contingency fund to make, make it work, then, and again, Mr Roman has indicated that the contingency fund is high. I think that's the direction we should take. Thank you.
I'm kind of split on this. I'd, I'd rather see us do a combination of a loan and part of coming from the reserves. Strictly from a cash flow standpoint, to, to be able to afford it without using up a lot of our working capital. I don't like the idea of, idea of a 20-year loan for $1.4 million. I think we're just loading up the next two or three councils that we're going to have to live with this. So I'd, I'd rather see a split of a million in a loan and 400 coming out of reserves. But I, I don't feel comfortable taking it all out of reserves or out of this, this 780 or whatever that's coming from HM.
I don't know what, Wolf had his hand raised there for.
Sorry, I didn't see. Go ahead, Wolf.
Yeah, sorry, to jump in, I just went down the hall to see you. We were, as another item on where the HM revenues go, we had conversations with Sheri Matthews. And she did raise a flag that allocating the Heritage North revenues to the water or wastewater funds may not be possible. And I don't have her email in front of me because I wasn't going to raise it. But I think it's because Heritage North was built through money raised from the levy. Whereas in 2016, based on advice council received from KPMG plus a number of other sources, they established that the water and wastewater funds had to be paid for from revenue raised for those purposes specifically. So just a caution, we need to explore that with Ms Matthews more before we can bring that forward as an option to sue. Raise that because I know she'll want us to.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, thanks, Director Haas, for bringing that up. I, I already thought about that. But there is another option too. We could loan the money from Heritage North to this project. Waterworks pays us back, the ratepayers pays less interest, and water and sewage rates go up less. And that is perfectly legal, to my understanding, that the town can loan money to itself.
I believe that is correct. However, the rate, the interest rate would have to be reflected what is within Ministry of Finance guidelines, Ministry of Municipal Affairs. So again, that's something we should bring back to you.
Yeah, I, I would like that because I, I wasn't aware of what you just mentioned. But also, I, I still think it's below bank rates. But I could be wrong. But I, I'm not going to discuss it because we don't know at this point. So yeah, I would appreciate if that could be looked into as a possibility. All I'm trying to do is keep any increase to the ratepayers at a minimal amount. Get the project done so that we don't lose the funding. We've already had a couple, I think at least two extensions. We have to move on this. But I want to keep it at minimal cost to the ratepayers. Thank you.
Counselor White?
Go ahead, Wolf.
From the research we were doing back in 2019 on this, I think that the interest would be at the current rate. Second item that we had discussed back then was, okay, do you borrow a smaller amount or a larger amount on the basis of what would get you the better rate? So again, we'll have to bring those items back for your consideration too.
Counselor White?
This is a question for the clerk. Is it possible to divide this motion so that we can go ahead and okay the contract? Because we all agree at the table that it needs to be done and it can't, and it can't wait. But then we can wait the two weeks and get another report from staff on other funding options. Is that possible?
Could be possible, but I would like to hear from Jim Roman if we can even approve it, if we don't have plans for all the funds, or is it, can it be two separate items, Jim?
Well, I'd be, I, I, I need to know tonight whether or not we would be awarding it in its entirety. Or whether or not we would be pulling out the, the proposed upgrades to the Chappie Hughes Lift Station. Deciding on how it's going to be paid for could certainly wait until, until another meeting. But to award the contract in, in one form or another.
Okay.
Yeah, I definitely feel that through conversation around the table that we're all in support 100% of moving forward as it was presented and as the RFP went out. So I don't think that's the issue. It's just the funding that's the issue. So that's how I feel personally, but my fellow council members can correct me if I, my understanding as well.
Counselor Ivanoff?
Yeah, we're arguing about money coming out of two different pockets, but they're, they're, they're back to taxpayer in the same way. So whether we increase in Waterworks and reduce taxes, or we keep, you know, increase taxes and keep water rates slower. I, you know, I think we're, we're ultimately trying to do the same thing. We're just looking at, as Counselor Owens, Owen says, he, that we're, our tax, Owen says that our taxes or our water rates are too high. And people are complaining about it, but if you raise taxes, you're going to have the same thing. So ultimately, you know, whatever we have to do to try and get this thing done is, that's what's important to me. And I think we should just move on. And whether we borrow it in, out of the water, with water, or we borrow money down the road with taxes, it's going to come out to the same thing to the taxpayer.
Counselor Owen?
Anybody that knows me knows that I'm an expert who have written a book on starting a project and figuring out how to pay for it later. So like, I, I, yeah. That being said, I think we need to move forward with this. So I'm in full support of giving my approval on a project as it's presented. Let's get the shovels in the ground as soon as possible, and let's figure out how to pay for it down the road.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I agree 100%. And I think, from what I'm reading here, that as a council, we are not favour, in favour of cutting anything out of this project. Taking shortcuts just ends up to greater expenses and problems and complaints down the road. And we can get enough complaints and we can have enough problems that just come in daily to us. We don't need to be creating problems for future councils. And I stand to be corrected if I'm wrong, but I think this council says, what I'm hearing is, go ahead, we'll figure out how to pay it, and don't cut anything from the tender. Go with what was tendered. And we'll, we'll, the cheque's in the mail, Jim.
I'm in agreement.
Okay, so I do have it moved by Stacy White and seconded by Casey Owens. So what I have done is taken away the last clause about the loan and changed that to say staff to report back with further options. So I'll read out the complete motion with that change.
Maybe the, it should be further funding options, not options of whether we're going ahead or not.
No, it, it is, it says, I'll, I'll read the whole motion here. So moved by Casey White, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that report number 2021-PW-006 entitled Awarding of RFP 493162021. Construction services for the Swastika Water Pollution Control Plant decommissioning and sewer system connection to the Kirkland Lake Wastewater Treatment Plant be received. That council hereby awards the contract to Peterson Construction 2013, Inc. to provide construction services to the Swastika Water Pollution Control Plant decommissioning and sewer system connection to the Kirkland Lake Wastewater Treatment Plant in the amount of $7,693,310 plus HST. That staff be directed to present a bylaw to authorise the execution of an agreement with Peterson Construction 2013, Inc. for the above noted contract. And that staff be directed to report back to council with further options of how to obtain the noted $1.4 million shortfall.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favour? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Do you want that to land? Oh, he's, oh, okay, sorry. That's item 6.5. Duncan Avenue North demolition. Courtney Nylund, Building Inspector and Property Standards Officer, and Wolf House, Director of Economic Development.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you to council. Courtney and I will be tag teaming on this. The report I provided to council gave a brief background of the building and the situation that we encountered. Effectively since 2012, situation within the building has been deteriorating due to structural integrity issues. MOL has posted orders on it, as has the town. And the owner, TNR, Techno on the Roads, their business collapsed with the death of the, the primary owner. And that left the building basically unattended and the town's responsibility. I believe that council had instructed that the building should come down in 2020. That did not occur. We revisited it with the 2021 budget, established a fund for that. And in July, put together with the, through the cooperation with Ministry of Labour.
Established a fund for that and in uh July put together with the into the cooperation with Ministry of Labor as well as our insurance adjusters, a RFP to solicit proposals for how the building can be handled, uh what their expectations from the town were. The building is considered a high risk. Uh one, because of the structural integrity. Two, because you cannot go near uh in it. You have to work from the outside and control it. And three, because subsequent inspections have found uh what appears to be dangerous materials inside the building such as uh gas containers, uh canisters, tires, both flammable and explosive materials. For that reason, we were looking to get best possible that we could get off the market to manage the project. Uh, the proposal, the RFP closed on August 31st. Eight firms had expressed an interest, four attended the compulsory site visits. One submitted a uh actual proposal. That firm McIntyre and Associates came in at 91,000 roughly 92,000. They have worked with the town before and have worked on uh dangerous demolitions. And do have both the uh expertise as well as the knowledge and equipment to do the job. They would propose to do the job and have it completed, I think it is by November 15th. October 50th. Uh, that of course depends on the um contract being put in place. So that's the Reader's Digest version of it. Um, back to you, sir.
Well, what uh was the budget amount we had for demolitions? Was it 200,000? I mean for for the year?
For the year was 150,000, I believe. Yes, 150,000.
Hundred, okay. Thank you. Any questions? Uh, Counselor Ivanoff.
Let's get it done. We've been talking about this for ever, it seems. So I I'm just, I'm in full support. Uh, I know we only have the one bid. Uh, other people probably didn't have the equipment. I know McIntyre does. Let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Owen.
Uh, a couple of questions. Do we own the property? And if we don't, do we register a lien against the property for the price of demolition? Thank you.
Not own the property. We are only allowed to take down the building and not affect anything else on the property. The cost of the demolition would be assigned to the tax for uh future redemption.
Counselor White.
Well, for clarification purposes, um when an RFP goes out, of course, there's uh rules and regulations about that and all those were definitely followed, yes?
Yes, they have.
Thank you, sir. And all of the businesses had equal opportunity to submit an RFP on this, correct?
Yes, I believe so. Uh, the RFP is posted. Uh, notice is given on the town websites, is posted on the dingo. And proponents that are interested, when they take it from the dingo, we are are notified of that. When they take it from the town website, we are not, we are not necessarily notified from that. However, we ask that they register, that they in this case also attend the mandatory site meetings. And then those that are registered would receive any added information.
Excellent. So those steps are pretty clear that all you have to do is pick up the paperwork, attend the site. And you would be uh included in the in the requirements.
The first few pages of the RFP, uh there was an executive summary that tells you what the key points are. And the other steps are outlined uh or repeatedly outlined within the context of the RFP.
Thank you very much, sir, for that clarification.
Counselor Owens. Yeah, I'd just like to thank uh Director Haas on this one and Courtney for your amazing and diligent work on this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? None noted. We have the uh resolution.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that report number 2021 dash dev dash 039 entitled 37 Duncan Avenue North demolition be received. And that staff be directed to present a bylaw to enter into an agreement with McIntyre and Associates Limited for the demolition of 37 Duncan Avenue North for a base price of 91,910 dollars 25 cents exclusive of taxes.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.6, Heritage North Sales Proceeds. Mr. Haas, Director of Economic Development.
Thank you, Your Worship through you to council. Um, the revenues from the heritage and the sale of Heritage North have been realized. Uh, they are with Council uh Treasury. We are seeking direction as to how council would like to have those funds directed. Uh, there are a number of uh options that we are putting forward in the report. These were worked on in coordination with the Treasury Division. One is add to the tax stabilization reserve. Establish a recreation facilities reserve fund, add to the life cycle replacement reserve fund. I gave through the rationale for the various uh options being put forward. Uh, tax stabilization fund uh or reserve, uh that is based on the fact that Heritage North was partially funded through the tax levy. Contributing in sale of proceeds to the reserve would give the corporation additional financial flexibility to stabilize tax rates or mitigate tax increases in the future. Establishing a recreation facilities reserve fund. Heritage North was effectively a recreation slash cultural uh facility. And we do have a number of other items before council looking uh to leverage federal and provincial funding for the renovation and renewal of other recreation and cultural assets. Uh, the fund from established through Heritage North proceeds could be used to supplement that, uh remove any additional costs to the taxpayer. Last one, add to the life cycle life cycle replacement reserve fund is similar to the above. It would be, the funds would be available to leverage funding for future capital projects at 800,000 dollars. It's fairly significant when you consider that most of those capital projects refunded programs will come in anywhere from 50 to 90% funding. Uh, there were another option was discussed in the previous uh item this evening. That is one that we can bring back. However, just to summarize, it is likely that there would be rules against doing utilizing the HN revenue for a waterworks or water project. But we will bring back a report to council on that.
Counselor Owens. I'd be in favor of either one or three. Our rec department is really, really, really good at getting funding from the government. Uh, Bonnie is a champion or a leader on this one. She has managed to get a lot of funds for rec our rec department and our rec department is in pretty good shape. From my perspective, anyway, the rest of our house, not so much though. We need fire hall, we need fire truck, we need plows, we need backhoes, we need streets, the sidewalks. I know a good friend that took a nasty tumble on a sidewalk and like we need money somewhere else than the rec department. So I think right now it'd be wise to utilize it either in a life cycle replacement reserve fund or a stabilization reserve. Either works. My favorite's three.
Counselor Owens. Owen, sorry.
That's okay. I'm not as good looking as Counselor Owens.
Work on it.
Yeah, um. My first choice would be to defer this. My first choice would be to defer this until we get a definitive answer about what we were discussing earlier. If we do not defer it. As Kate, as Counselor Owens has pointed out, we have a number of must have things that we must get. And and that's just a partial listing. We need at least two uh cement pads at the works department that meet environmental conditions and two cones over top of the those pads to uh protect the sand and gravel that we put on the streets. That's another must have that, you know, we we've been getting away with, but we will not get away with forever. Um. You know, we, I'm tired of people telling me that the streets in Kirkland Lake are okay because they're worse somewhere else. They're worse somewhere else. No. The point is our streets are in very bad shape. And you know, we're talking millions and millions and millions of dollars. Yes, we need senior level funding to do it. But we need money set aside to access should the federal funding come through. I just think it's time uh to start focusing on our hard needs. Giving the tools to the different departments that they need to do their jobs. And you know, I I'm very impressed with the amount of sidewalk work that's been done this year. I I'm and and it's gone well beyond repair. It's it's literally like if you look at assumption and and near the Fireman's Park in Swastika, it's total reconstruction. We need to have money to continue those programs to make this a safer community, a community that's more accessible for people with accessibility issues. So I would be in favor of number three. Or working capital, uh well, you know, working capital, I believe, is where equipment and stuff comes out of. So one or the other.
Counselor Ivanoff.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with uh Counselor Owen on the deferral. I think that uh it's too early to make that decision until a next council is not gonna I mean, 800, 800,000 dollars sitting in the kitty for another meeting is not gonna harm anything and we'll have some more information. And if not, that life cycle replacement reserve fund to me looks like a a great place to put it. Thank you.
Counselor Owens.
Just out of curiosity, if we put it in either one of those these funds, does it mean we can't access it period afterwards if it does turn back to uh turn out that we can loan it to ourselves for the Swastika project?
We'd have to have another motion, you know, has to come back.
So either way, it's coming back to council, whether we defer it or whether if we just pass it now and just say, hey, we need the money. Can we borrow it from the left hand to the right hand? Yeah, but I.
Yeah, I agree with you though.
Like I I don't necess, there's so many other projects that we need done. Like, I mean, water can't be the only thing on our plate, like we need to be able to share the pie and as many pieces as we can get.
We can, yeah. Counselor White.
I would agree to defer it uh for this evening because there's too many variables um at this point. So um also, I kind of feel that if we add it to the life cycle replacement fund, the complex recreation department civic uh parks and trails, they can actually access that money. It's not specific to that department, but it is life cycle replacement. And and there is many things, many working parts in those departments that would fall under that. So I don't necessarily believe at this time we need a devoted recreation uh fund, but if I was the mover, I'd actually defer it until next meeting.
Counselor Shaba.
Yeah, I'm in favor of the deferral as well.
Right. We have a motion uh to defer.
I have a mover as Lad Shaba and the seconder as Stacy White. And so I can amend the motion to be received and to refer it to the next meeting with further conversations about the 1.4 million dollar shortfall of funds. Uh, my only question is if I could just have some assistance with the wording, would I call it the Swastika wastewater decommissioning project? Like for saying that that's the, okay, I just want to make sure that that was the right sound of it.
So.
I'm sorry, Megan, I would actually just leave it open ended and I'm saying um it has been deferred and referred back to staff for a report on funding potential. Uh, yeah, potential funding avenues.
Just a reminder, please use your microphones. We can't.
Just it just has to be how the money can be applied to whatever we apply to. And whether we can apply to water, we may not be able to at all. So I don't think you have to just uh a report back. That's all we need is, you know.
We have three options listed. We don't have that fourth. So we're just saying can there be a fourth option?
Okay, so I can say moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that report number 2021 dash dev dash 036 entitled Heritage North Sales Proceeds be received and that this matter be referred to the next regular meeting of council.
Yep, yep. All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.7. Municipal household waste hazardous waste agreement with automotive material stewardship. Mr. Charbonneau, Waste Management Manager.
Thank you, Your Worship and through you to council. This uh this report speaks to an agreement with automotive material stewardship. Um, a little background, municipal household hazardous and special waste are products that contain corrosive, toxic, flammable and reactive components. During a municipal household uh special waste event, the materials collected are recorded separately and the items can be submitted for funding through various contracts being Stewardship Ontario, Product Care Association, and now Automotive Material Stewardship. As of October 1st, 2021, Automotive Material Stewardship will begin operating as a producer responsibility organization, a PRO under Ontario's new hazardous and special products regulation. Made under the Resource Recovery and Circular Economy Act, AMS will henceforth assume responsibility for the funding of the collection of used oil filters, used oil containers, used antifreeze and its uh and its and its containers that come with that. The agreement will need to be executed in order to have AMS fund the collection of any materials at a local event, shouldn't have any local events like we do on Archer Drive in the future. Um, it's a it's more of a housekeeping item as the province moves through the framework uh for waste diversion and circular economy. Uh, there's absolutely no changes to the current funding uh funding formula and everything will be status quo. It's just a just a change in name and uh and how they how they're gonna go through it. Any questions?
Counselor Owen. Yeah, um. Yeah, my question is like when I get my car serviced or whatever, I get charged a hazardous fee. Now it's becoming the responsibility of the uh manufacturer to to look after that. Do I still, will I still be charged that fee? Is it not their responsibility now to pay that fee for me?
Uh, through you, Your Worship, I I to Counselor Owen, I'm not sure on how that part of the framework will will affect um uh private business. Uh, this is just uh for us as as a municipality at this point. Uh, there's a lot of, a lot of things as as they're moving through. And as we get information, uh we'll we'll definitely share it with uh with the rest of you on how uh how this uh you know, Resource Recovery and Circular Economy Act will will play out in the the next couple of years.
Great, great, Mr. Charbonneau. I didn't mean to put you on the spot like that. It's just uh I know in the European models manufacturers end up bearing the cost. You can argue that ultimately the consumer does anyways, but um yeah, I I think we need to get get an agreement with them. And if I heard you right, this would mean funding for future contaminated waste things, which I view is very, very important in a community our size. If you live, uh, well, the example I use is the city of Arilia because I I I use their hazardous waste. You can go seven days a week and drop it off at no charge, but they have the population base in the county of Simcoe to do that. We don't have that. And so as a result, a lot of people in the community end up putting your paint cans from whatever in in the garbage. And it ends up in our landfill where it shouldn't be. Or they, like me, end up with about 10. cans of three quarter or one quarter fill paint uh, in their basement or whatever, which again is not ideal should there be a fire or whatever. So, um, if there's funding here for that type of event, I, I think we should definitely go with it. Thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion. Madam Clerk.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that report number 2021-dev-038 entitled Municipal Household Hazardous Waste Agreement with Automotive Materials Stewardship be received and that staff be directed to present a bylaw to execute an agreement with Automotive Materials Stewardship AMS in order to receive any funding through AMS.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.8, request to purchase lands uh, Goché Township and north part I guess it's Swastika, isn't it? Yeah, mining claim.
All right, uh, thank you worship, uh, through you to council. We did receive a request to purchase um, a mining claim out near the landfill site. Um, so at this time, they're requesting, um, to purchase for 25,000. We are looking at retaining the water rights on this property. We, so basically we're just looking to have this declared a surplus and took a lot of notice of intent to sell uh, to the numbered company for 25,000 and then the other property or two mining claims out on near Swastika. Um, so those two requests came in at a $50,000 rate. So basically, uh, we do, are requesting that. In regards to the revenue that would come from those land sales, uh, I'm seeking direction if we can place the revenue into the Community Improvement Plan Fund. Um, and this is in relation to the fact that those two properties in question did um, start out as properties from the timber harvesting, the forest management plan. Um, so in the case of the property over by the landfill, we would have been issuing an RFP and the funds would have been going into that pot anyways. Um, so I'm just looking for direction if we can be uh, permitted to put the funds from, or the revenues from these two land sales into that CIP.
Counselor Ivanoff.
No, I think it's a great idea. I think, uh, that funding would have gone there had we sold the timber. And now that we're selling the property instead, I think that's a great idea to put it into the Community Improvement Fund. Thank you.
Counselor Owen.
Yeah, thank you worship. I, I agree too. I'm just, uh, curious, how much do we have in the CIP fund currently? Will?
I don't have the exact figures. I didn't look into it. I believe there's about 125,000. But it could be, it's within that ballpark.
Okay, well, that's good because if all goes well, we're looking at, at dispersing some of that money and so we need to top it up. And hopefully the disbursement will be the start of, of other disbursements. So I'm in full agreement.
Great. Any further comments? We have a motion, Madam Clerk.
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that report number 2021-dev-040 entitled Request to Purchase Lands MCL 28300 Goché Township and MCRSC 210 and North Part of RSC 209 be received. That council hereby declares the properties MCL 28300 Goché Township and MCRSC 210 and North Part of RSC 209 Swastika as surplus land and provide notice of intent to sell. That staff be directed to prepare and present a bylaw to council to authorize the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake to enter into an agreement of purchase and sale to sell the mining claim L28300 Goché Township for 25,000 to 2740358Ontario Inc. That staff be directed to prepare and presented by law to council to authorize the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake to enter into an agreement of purchase and sale to sell mining claims RSC 210 and North Part of RSC 209 to Mr. Dahala Hussein for $50,000. And that staff be directed to place the revenue associated with the land sales into the Community Improvement Plan Fund.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.9, Loose Parts Playground Request, the Secretary Director of Community Services.
Thank you worship, through you to council. Back in June, we had some volunteers present to council who were interested in developing a loose parts playground. That was followed by a staff report and council had directed staff to work with the volunteers to ensure that this playground could become a reality. Our most recent request from the volunteers is to, um, allow the, allow them to have the town receive donations for the park so that tax receipts can be issued. As well, they would like to use the municipality's business number so that they are eligible to apply for grants. In speaking with our treasury department, this has been done in the past for other nonprofit groups who aren't able to do this on their own. And there were some criteria that would be required that Deputy Treasurer, Mr. George Off shared with me. Um, that those were presented to the volunteers and they are in full agreement to follow those rules. So at this time, staff do recommend that we allow this to progress so that hopefully we can get a loose parts playground off the ground.
Any comments? Counselor Ivanoff.
Great idea, and I think, uh, letting him out you to, uh, have tax receipts is, is good, provided the uh, product that he gives worth what you give him on the receipt. Yeah, uh, great idea.
No further comments? We have a motion.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that report number 2021-cs-019 entitled Loose Parts Playground Request be received and that staff be directed to accept donations for the loose parts park and issue tax deductible receipts to the donor and to allow the volunteers to apply to eligible funds under the municipality's name and business number.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.10, Kirkland Lake District Chamber of Commerce Request for Parade Permit. Madam Clerk.
Thank you worship, through you to council. Uh, the Kirkland Lake District Chamber of Commerce, uh, provided an application to get a parade permit for the Santa Claus parade. So bringing this forward to you today to ensure approval of that. And we will coordinate, um, the volunteers with public work staff for any of the closures and equipment they may need as well as circulate the regular permit to its channels such as OPP, fire, ambulance, anyone that is, um, of course, needing to know of the road closures.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? None noted. We have a motion.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that memorandum number 2021-clk-18m entitled Kirkland Lake District Chamber of Commerce Request for Parade Permit be received. That staff be directed to issue a parade permit to the Kirkland Lake District Chamber of Commerce for November 26, 2021. And that staff be directed to coordinate details with the applicant for the temporary road closures on part of Main Street, Government Road, Duncan Avenue, and Second Street.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 7, consideration of notices of motion.
And your worship, just a reminder that this was moved by Counselor Shaba and it requires a second or before conversation if so.
Counselor Owen will second the motion.
Okay, is there any conversation or would you like me to go ahead?
Counselor Owens. Correct me if I'm wrong, uh, maybe Megan can help her. I'm not sure who, uh, is the staff director of corporate services. That's part of the strategic plan is this council approved, right? As one of the positions?
It is an approved position in our org chart. Yes, that was council approved.
Okay, that is the term I was looking for. I couldn't, so for us to get involved at this point, isn't it overreaching council's authority?
Um, I believe at this point in time, there was questions about the budgetary for this salary because I do not believe it was included in this year's budget. So there would be a couple of months towards the end of the year where there would be, uh, funds needed. Uh, that of course would have to come from treasury, but of course offhand to keep in mind that there was funds budgeted for a CAO that we've been without, so offhand, I would think it would work out in the wash, but that would definitely have to come from treasury.
So at this point, there's no Okay, yeah, I've, you have.
So your report is basically what the salary range is? Is that my correct?
Counselor Shaba was putting for, Counselor Shaba put forth a note, a motion to ask staff to report back on the budgetary impact of the posted director of corporate services.
Counselor Shaba.
Okay, thank you very much. If I may just get a a little bit of a background to, uh, how this came about. The, uh, what I was told, uh, at, at the time was that the the, this one position uh, for the treasurer and director of corporate services was one position in the organization chart. So at, uh, can't think of the date of the meeting. Uh, one of the meetings when we are uh, devolving a lot of responsibilities to the senior management. Uh, we inadvertently, in my view anyways, uh, split that position. Uh, all of a sudden, we have a, a posting for director of corporate services. Well, in retrospect, we look at it and say, well, hmm, well, we do not have any of this posting, uh, in the budget. What we do have in the budget is for the position of director of corporate services and treasurer. The two, not one. So what I tried to do, and I don't want to interfere with the internal, uh, aspect of the, of the management. What I tried to do is to ask, uh, where's this, uh, money going to come from? Since it was not budgeted for initially, where's that going to come from to, uh, uh, essentially, uh, for this position, which is, uh, something like, uh, ninety something thousand dollars. Post ninety one thousand dollars. So my thinking is that if we go ahead with the position with ninety two thousand dollars, we'll come to a point where, uh, a treasurer, uh, which we're, that I was told by a law that we have to have. We have to hire one, which would be another sum of money, which I don't know. So my question is very simple, uh, is to ask the staff. So this money that we didn't budget for, so how do we really account for that money, uh, to, uh, essentially finance this position? That's all I'm asking. I'm not asking, I'm not questioning the legitimacy of that position. I'm not questioning, uh, you know, any other things. I just want to know because that's our job here to watch the budget. That's our job, uh, to, to make sure that, I mean, we just went through that all evening to make sure that whatever money that's to be spent and the money, uh, the money, uh, has been duly budgeted for. So that's what I want to know, if the staff can show us that, well, okay, this is where this money is going to come from. This, I, I call it a new money anyways. Some might could be saying I'm wrong, but convince them where the money is going to come from. That will answer my question. That's it. I'm not a, I'm not, uh, talking about the position is, uh, good or not good or all of that stuff. I just want to know where the money is going to come from to finance the position. Thank you very much, your worship.
Counselor Owens.
How did we finance it before the departure of Mr. Gorman? I mean, he was our treasurer and director of corporate services. I'm assuming, or do I have the positions mixed up?
He, at that point, uh, he was filling both positions as one, as the treasurer and the director of corporate services.
Okay, how did we finance it?
Under one salary. I this thing got approved, I think it was just the bear, we had a uh, we, we did have a quorum. I, I guess one thing, can you clarify the position that we have our, uh, Mr. Bell Chamber working on for recruitment? Is it for director of corporate services or treasurer? Or, uh, I'm sorry. Uh, we have, have we, uh, put out, uh, a request for, uh, director of corporate services?
Well, it was posted, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
I don't know, I, I'm, I'm having second thoughts about it. I, I really felt after the fact uh, we rushed into it. I'm just giving you my, my opinion. I would rather have seen us hire the treasurer, wait six months, uh, see if that person is in the position, has the uh, the experience and the whatever to, uh, to assume that as one position as it was in the past. I know that's, that's not what we proved, but I'm just giving you my thoughts. Counselor Owen.
Yeah, I'm not going to reopen, uh, the debate about that. I have my own feelings, uh, on what happened there. And, uh, what happened, happened. But my biggest concern is that legally, there are only certain things that the treasurer can do. Legally, we must have a treasurer. We have no choice. And it's going to catch up to us. And yet, we're not even talking about filling the treasurer's job. I don't even know if it's being posted. Has it been posted? I'm not, like I say, I, I haven't kept up on it. But, I mean, for me, my priority and I'm not, I'm, I'm, you know, staff is their priority and that, and that's fine. I, I, I recognize that. I appreciate that. But as a counselor, my research indicates that it's very important for us to get a treasurer in place. Legally, we have to have one. And there's all, and, and parts of that job can only be signed off by the treasurer, so that's my concern. It's sort of parallel. But I think all, all that Lad's asking for is where's the money going to come from? And, and, and that's, to me, is a very realistic, uh, question because, okay, you can justify it this year by saying, well, we're not paying a CAO. But hopefully by next year, we do have a CAO and we do have a treasurer. And then where's the money going to come from? So I think Lad's question is, is certainly very legitimate. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ivanoff.
Yeah, I think our issue is we need a CAO and that, you know what, we can, uh, we have, we have a ship without a captain. And this idea of, uh, you know, waiting and waiting and waiting, and I know that it's, there's a process we have to go through, but I think these questions should be answered by a CAO sitting at the, you know, at the head of, of council here, not, not us trying to get other staff members to try and answer questions that they really don't have the skill set to answer or they, or the knowledge. I mean, it's a, it's a CEO that's missing it. You know, having, you know, as, you know, having somebody in charge of finance, having all those issues are, all go to one person. We just don't have that person. So until we solve that one issue, we're not going to solve all these other small, because I, I look at the postings on, on the web and I'm thinking, oh my god, like there, how many people are left? Because there's got to be ten or fifteen jobs posted right now. You know, it's, uh, it's gone to a point where every day there's a, a list of two or three or four jobs. Uh, and some of them are TPR. I mean, they might be insignificant as far as, you know, the operation of the town, but some of them are huge jobs that are, uh, very important to our community and, and they're being posted on a regular basis. And people are either, I mean, there's maternity leaves to, to deal with, retirements to deal with. Uh, that was the important thing of this council when we first got a roadmap of who was leaving, when I'd be leaving. Uh, that was the important thing of this council when we first got a roadmap of who was leaving, when I'd be leaving, why are, you know, when are they gonna, you know, when do we start recruiting? Well, we're at that, we've got a crisis right now, I think.
I agree. Uh, Will, go ahead.
I just wanted to, I think some of the stuff you've subsequently uh covered, but um we did post for a director of corporate services with a financial background. One of the reasons in loosening that restriction is that it was extremely difficult to find somebody that would be able to step in and perform a full treasurer's uh role and the director's role. So we're trying to cast the net a little bit wider. And yes, we were fighting, uh, as we had talked to council before, you don't have um a C A O in place, but you did account for a C A O salary for this year. Going forward, it was on your uh, your organization chart. Um, and with the proper financial background at the director level, the treasury department can continue to operate and fulfill its responsibilities as Counselor Owen had pointed out. You can still make a treasurer out of that. Um, but the the real challenge has been too that the director of corporate services is one of the pivotal points for a lot of the other initiatives that are keeping the corporation afloat. And without addressing it, we are very much afraid you will have a much more difficult time finding and holding on to a C A O coming in because that means that they by default would have to take those responsibilities. We're trying to lessen that load, make it easier to find a suitable candidate that can be moved and developed as director slash treasurer and find a C A O. There's multiple threads that we're trying to work at the same time in concert with council.
All right, I guess the question is back to what uh Counselor Shaba asked. Did we budget for both treasurer and director of corporate services?
You do so in your annual budget. In this uh twenty twenty one budget, I do not know. I do not believe that uh the position was budgeted for this year. The likelihood of finding somebody to come in, you probably would be paying probably one month's salary because of the time it takes to transition from one job to another, should you find a successful candidate. So the financial impact, I believe, and I could be wrong, I hope my colleagues straighten me out on that, is minimal based on what you are achieving in terms of putting the corporation back on the proper footing. I'll give you an example. Right now, we have uh serious concerns with the um information technology, the I T systems within council chambers, being able to manage a dual uh in-person uh Zoom and delegation um, called in type of uh arrangements. And our I T person is working, he's never worked in a senior municipal position, however, he's hanging on and doing whatever he can, but he doesn't have anybody to provide him with direct guidance. That would be the director of corporate services. Your asset management plan is in the same situation. It is proceeding and we are working under the guidance of the uh, the consultants that have been engaged. However, to give it the proper hold within finance does require the guidance of a director of corporate services. Same thing with the financing as we go forward. So that that was why the management team came back and suggested, recommended that that position be posted for. Chances are, people will look and entertain a position now. Finding people in January or February is extremely difficult. Um. Again, that's my perspective on it. I may well be very much incorrect. I hope my colleagues straighten me out on that.
Well, I think you uh, I'll get back to you. Uh, I, I think you uh explained the the impact on the budget for two thousand twenty one, which would be minimal. Should council decide uh to do something different in next year, uh, that's another subject for discussion at a later date. Is that a fair comment?
That is actually a very good point, and that is why um we do believe we should be bringing back and update, the financial update. As well as, as we had said previously, the organization chart is a living document. It should be reflecting both the current and projected needs of the corporation. That will have to come back to council, uh, to be updated, council to be made aware of where the both the challenges and the opportunities are within the corporation.
Well, I, I, I hear you. I am in in agreement with Counselor Ivanoff is right now the priority is the C A O.
Yeah, yeah.
We've got to get the ship on on uh going in the right direction. Uh, Counselor White.
Um, I just believe that we're getting very off topic.
We are.
The the actual uh resolution um that we're looking at is whether or not staff should bring back a report um on the budget. So so maybe it's time to kind of get back on topic and and deal with what's at hand.
Well, I think we know what the the uh, not necessarily, we we do know approximately what the financial impact is, but the salary range was ninety to two hundred and ten. So that basically, I think, answers that question. If there's further discussion, let's add another, another topic for discussion at a later date. Counselor White.
So my question is, um, Counselor Shaba, um, you've brought this motion today. Do you still want to continue with the report back at next meeting or in a future meeting?
Yes, uh, because I I thank the staff for partially answering the question. Uh, but it's not fulsome. What I heard uh now is that there may be a little bit of money uh at this particular time to uh to put towards that position because of uh some of the vacancies that we've got on now. But, I mean, you're not going to hire someone as a director of corporate services, so uh, we're only going to keep you for for three or four months because we don't know what the budget situation will be after that. So there is no uh long-term funding for that position as I see it because it was not uh in the budget. Yes, I appreciate people saying, well, you know, we've got this one off field, we've got that one off, we can uh, we can collate all this money together and keep the position going for three to four months. But, you know, nobody's going to come here and work for three or four months in that position. So if the staff can bring us a report another day, uh, I'm fine. It's been a, been a long day and then we can just move on. Thank you.
So we have a motion moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Rick Owen, be it resolved that staff be directed to report back to council on the budgetary impact of the posted position of the director of corporate services.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? One opposed? Motion uh carried. Uh, introduction and uh consideration of bylaws, item number eight. Madam Clerk.
Okay, we have a few bylaws this evening. First one moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time numbered pass, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty one dash zero six eight being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with Petrowski Consultants Limited for energy profile information, greenhouse gas emissions and structural information.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Lad Shaba, be it resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time numbered pass, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty one dash zero six five being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with automotive material stewardship for safe handling of used oil filters and used oil containers, used antifreeze and its containers.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff, be it resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time numbered pass, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty one dash zero seven zero being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with Nigel Bell Chamber for the search and recruitment of a chief administrative officer.
All in favor? Motion carried. Opposed? None noted.
And the last bylaw, I just want to take a second to um explain it a little bit. This is for our O P P services agreement. So I have been in contact with um, I don't know her title, but anyway, somebody who helps us through doing these agreements. And she, they are planning to change a lot of language and the sections and basically the layout of the current agreement. So she suggested the best course of action for the municipalities right now, that their agreements are expiring at the end of this year, is just to amend that agreement for one more year and then during next year, there will be different information to make a new agreement upon. So this bylaw is just to get us through past the end of this year to still have police services. And then next year, we'll be redoing a full contract with them.
So you're saying an extension?
Pretty much. It it it's an amendment to extend it, yes.
Counselor White.
So normally when we're doing any kind of contract um bylaws, the the contract is included. Um, why was the O P P past contract not included with this?
Um, I apologize with that. I just took what she supplied to me to present.
Okay, thank you.
Don't have it, yeah. Um, so I just wanted to give you a little bit of that information. It's basically, it's more of a housekeeping item than anything, and just to give you the heads up that next year, there will be something needing to fully execute further. So moved by Casey Owen, seconded by Lad Shaba, be it resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time numbered pass, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty one dash zero seven one being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an amending agreement with Her Majesty the Queen and right of Ontario as represented by the Solicitor General for the provision of police services for the town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Motion carried. Questions from council to staff? None noted? Uh, notices of motion? None noted? Uh, counselor, uh, counselors' reports? Uh, Counselor White.
Just a reminder that uh, starting the thirteenth, smiles from Tim Hortons, their proceeds go to the Texan Tenure Library. So I hope all members of the public and and council and staff uh definitely uh support this because libraries are very important. Thank you.
What's the date again?
It begins September thirteenth.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Owen.
Yeah, um, thank you, worship. Uh, this year, um, in my neighborhood as well as other neighborhoods, there has been a real bear problem. In fact, I have a three-year-old and a one-and-a-half-year-old living in my house. Uh, across the road, there's like an eight-year-old and a and a five-year-old. Up the street, there's a couple of young children. Um. And at between four thirty and and five o'clock in the afternoon, when these kids are out playing, a bear walks through the neighborhood. Um. I'm a little disturbed by this. It's one thing for me to be giving my my daughter a ride home from work at just after eleven o'clock and to see a bear in my driveway. Um. Yeah, that was a little surprising, shocking, but we can deal with it. We got the truck, we can blow the horn, we can yell at, we can get rid of it. Um, and my daughter, on on the, on both these occasions, the foam bear wise. Okay, which is what they tell you to do. And quite frankly, I am so disappointed in their response. I'm sorry, but I'm not putting spoiled diapers next to my food in my freezer. That's not going to happen, and that's not a reasonable expectation of something for residents to do. No, I cannot bring my garbage can into my house. We use the automated system. Those cans are big. I live in a small house. And the only place that I could put that in my house would be in my kitchen. I'm not putting garbage in my kitchen. No, we do not live in the bear's habitat. For more than a hundred people, for more than a hundred years, people have lived in Kirkland Lake. This is human habitat. Now, in the close to forty years that I've lived here, I've observed that the only time we have a problem with nuisance bears is when there's a poor berry crop. And that's what happened this year. So rather than tell people to put their soiled diapers in with their food and pull their garbage cans into the kitchen, why isn't the ministry setting up feeding spots outside of town where the bears will be conditioned to go to eat and stay out of town when there's a bad berry crop? It makes perfect sense. And in fact, that's the exact thing that bear hunters do. The guides, they have an area, they go out and they bait that area so that the bears are conditioned to come into that area. Why are my grandchildren and the other children on my street being put at risk? Try and tell a one-and-a-half-year-old that that big black thing's not a dog. You know, try and tell a four-year-old that watches friendly bear things on T V. In fact, one of his favorite things is a, is it's a, it's similar to Masha and the Bear, but it's a different program. Try and tell that four-year-old that, oh, don't go close to that bear. And when you have bears in the daytime, when the kids are out playing, the M and R should be doing something. And I I'm just, I'm at my wits' end. Like, there there is a solution. I mean, they used to trap them and take them away. They, you know, they they barely do that anymore. So I'm I'm just I'm at my wits' end. Thank you.
Counselor White.
Actually, yes, I definitely support Rick's concern over the bear issue. I've had several calls and and messages via social media about this issue. I've had bears at my own home. Um, we ratchet strap our garbage. And over the past weekend, he took the entire garbage bin down our street because he wanted it so bad. He didn't get anything, but he took the entire garbage. My father out in federal as well has had these issues, so it is widespread this year in our community. And I believe that if we feel um altogether, uh, we feel this is an important issue, perhaps a motion next meeting is in order to put pressure on the ministry to do more for our rural communities having issues with bears.
I do think it's a valid point. Uh, I know for moving back to Kirkland Lake and North Bay, uh, they have different spots uh around North Bay where they feed the deer in the, in the spring because there's no food. So I I don't think it's a ridiculous request. Hope you want to bring a motion, uh, and Rick, uh?
Yeah, I will bring a motion. And like I said, it's only in years where the berry crop is bad that we have the extent of the problem that we have now. Uh, most years, yeah, you'll hear about the odd bear here or there, but I mean, I don't even have a barbecue in my yard, right? I mean, we're doing everything right. And and yes, like Counselor White, we have ratchet strapped our garbage, but you know, I wonder how many people at the ministry are going to take their grandchildren's soiled diapers and put them next to their food? Like, how many of them are going to pull their garbage? Like, how many of them are going to pull their garbage cans into their kitchen, which is small? I just, and, and to me, the solution seems simple. Do the same thing as what the hunters do. In the bad years, feed them, but feed them outside of town so they're conditioned to go to that site. They'll smell it and they'll continue to go back there. In the good years, no problem, don't do anything. So I will bring a notice of motion next meeting. And hopefully, the rest of council will support me. Because when I saw, I have a picture of the bear. And, you know, just up the street with two kids riding on their bicycles. And this bear, I watched it go up on my neighbor's porch, which is only maybe four feet by six feet. And it went right to the door. And there's two children in that house under the age of 10. You know? There's no fear. Anyway, sorry, I, it's, it's emotional for me because my grandchildren are involved in their safety, or is it, sorry.
A motion to accept the report from council?
Oh, I have.
Oh, sorry.
Mine will be quick, mine will be quick.
Yep, sorry about that.
I've, I, I travel, I walk from the beginning of Archer Drive and Government Road all the way down Main Street. And over the past few months, we've now seen a lot of garbage all over the place. And people have started to complain. And I got a, I mean, a few complaints myself and I did see them. So I'm not too sure what the town could do. I know in some cities, they put signs to people not to litter. So, which is, at least I have to get to that. We've got a lot of volunteers that, I mean, they will be going out there and then try to pick up garbage. But, I mean, is there a way we'll get the word out to people that, you know, they shouldn't be throwing their garbage? Some people even throw it out the window when driving their car. That's not a way to keep our town beautiful. Thank you.
I agree. Counselor Ivanoff.
Counselor Shaba, you know what? I don't know if we have a littering bylaw in Kirkland Lake and we certainly don't have any signage. Maybe we need a littering bylaw with some teeth in it that will scare people into putting their garbage in the garbage instead of their, because you're right, you know what? And you can go walk anywhere in town. And if you don't see a Tim Horton cup every 50 feet, and I'm not blaming Tim Hortons because that's, their job is, is to sell coffee, not to pick up garbage. But I mean, that's, it's, it is absurd that people think because it's a cup, they can just throw it out the window and it, there it goes. And, you know, so I, you know, I think we should do some research and find out if there is a, but I, I remember mentioning this to a counselor when I wasn't a counselor, that Kirkland Lake needed some teeth and some signage because people walk down the street 10 feet from a garbage can and will throw garbage on the street, on Government Road, often. You know, dog poo is the same way. You know, there's people, there's bags all over the place and they'll leave the dog poo on this because they haven't brought their own. And, you know, if you put some teeth into it and a few people get charged, I think it might just wake some people up and understand that littering is littering.
Madam Clerk, do you have a motion?
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. We have, require motions moved into in-camera sessions.
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that council move into a closed session pursuant to Section 239-2 to discuss one land disposition matter and one labor relations matter.
All in favor? Motion carried. A little short recess. Okay, any matters from the closed session for discussion? None noted? Confirmation bylaw?
Moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time, numbered pass, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number 21-072 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held September 7, 2021.
All in favor? Motion carried. Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that council adjourn the September 7, 2021 regular meeting of council?
All in favor? Motion carried. Good night.